Good evening, everyone. This is Heather von Mary. I am the Chair of the Planning Board. It looks like we do have a quorum. I believe that Heather Hannan will be joining us shortly. But since we have a quorum, I would like to begin. It's 7:30 on Tuesday, August 18th. And we have, we're going to go over just some really quickly updates. We have a pretty packed meeting, so I want to make sure that we stay on our agenda items today. So we're going to minimize the updates. And then if we need to, we can move them to the end of the meeting when we're all done. If there's any more things that members of the Planning Board would like to have updates on. One big item that Brian Sackely, our Town Planner, who's on the call with us and joins us in these meetings, pointed out today is we had two filings be submitted today. One was for 1016 Mount Vernon and the other one is for 654 Main Street. We don't need to discuss them at all. They were just filed today. However, to the Planning Board, it looks like we will be meeting on those for the first time October 6th and 13th. So if those dates don't work for you, please let me know or Brian. But those are the dates that we will take them up. Which one first? I haven't, it doesn't, I haven't decided. But the 6th and the 13th of October, 1016 Mount Vernon and 654 Main Street will be reviewed for their applications to the Planning Board. Our, our next meeting is on September 8th. And then also the 18th of September. So those are the next two meetings in September and then those are the dates in October. Brian, you had some updates on some mask zones? Did you want to fill in the board on that?
So there's, this morning, it, there was a reopening committee meeting. It consisted of members, members of the business community as well as town staff. And as well as public health officials, a representative from Winchester Hospital, Jen Murphy, our Board of Health Director, and obviously Town Manager Lisa Wong. And I was alerted to the fact that the Select Board will be talking about a potential mask zone in the Center Business District this Monday. I don't know anything else than that, other than they're talking about it, meaning, yeah. So that's kind of interesting. It's definitely happened in other cities and towns in Massachusetts in a little bit more dense areas such as Cambridge and Salem and several other places. So, but, okay, that's one update. The other update that I had is related to the Shared Streets Grant. So I'm going to apply for that this week. It was interesting to note that, so we were really, we were trying to get dining decks and then barriers in the form of planters and other types of heavy barriers to make people feel more safe when they're dining, to make pedestrians feel more safe as well. The dining decks for about nine restaurants cost $300,000. This was shocking to both Tool, who's the consultant that helps applicants through the process for the Shared Streets Grant, and they were shocked by the price tag as well. So $300,000 out of a, out of a grant, of a total grant that we were potentially asking for of $600,000. I nearly went crazy and obviously they were like, yeah, we had no idea. So we got rid of the dining decks immediately. And that is not part of the cost of the grant that we are applying for. But we, we are getting barriers and we are also getting stipends for artists in order to paint these barriers. They've been a lot, I sent, I think, some around just to the Planning Board and others around. But local artists are getting paid anywhere from, I think, $100 to $200 per barrier. And they're absolutely stunning and amazing. And we're trying to make that be a part of how we can. And it's mostly going to be planters. But the point is that the grant is significantly different now. We're asking for about $140,000. And that's all the updates I have for that at the moment.
Hey, Brian, can I jump in for one more update?
Of course.
Oh, so I, I was hoping to ask at the last meeting, but it's been, it just, we ran out of time and it went to 10:30. So it was too late. But I know you and Heather, or maybe it was you, I couldn't quite figure out. You were going to meet with our Town Manager Lisa Wong and just talk about how the work gets, the larger project gets assigned to you when we're not, the Planning Board isn't brought into the discussion. So what happened? What, I mean-
Maureen, I haven't been able to meet with Lisa yet. Our schedules haven't been able to line up.
I, but I have.
Yeah.
And I, I do have an update about that. So thank you, Maureen, for asking. So one big, extremely time-consuming implement, a grant if we do get it to implement, is the MVP Grant related to the communications strategy to reach our environmental justice population that is significantly more dense in the north part of town. That is a higher percentage of Asian people that, you know, of Asian descent. Because of that EJ environmental justice, because of that EJ population, that it's very, it's quite possible that we actually are a very good contender of this grant. And that the manager made it very clear that she, that I'm going to, that, that her department is going to be heading up a lot of the, because most of it is going to be through a website or, and through communication, which is part of a larger plan that the, that the manager is trying to do. So that's one big thing. So I think it's going to be more on a project by project basis, Maureen, to, 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 that the small thing. It's going to be, but there are going to be more coordination. And basically Lisa was like, tell me what you need. What, you know, what, you know, what, what do you think is? So that, that's how we're handling it. And I think you're more than, you should, you're more than welcome to be a part of those conversations.
Yeah, I guess, and we don't need to spend any more time, just as a matter of going back. And it, I mean, it's totally appropriate and reasonable, the job description, which is to assist the Planning Board. And I guess it's kind of a compliment that the Town Manager looks at you and says, maybe if you could ask Brian to do this. But our board does, we talked about it a little bit last time. And so I will just wrap up by saying, I think of larger projects, and I don't know, we haven't defined that. But if it takes more than a day, I really think that these assignments have to be understood. Good, they're not assignments, these requests from outside the Planning Board for us to evaluate. Because we do have, we've got a list we haven't even really been able to spend much time on. This long list of things that we feel are under our authority, that we want to work with you on getting, you know, making progress on. So I'll stop there.
No, understood. There's no doubt that the biggest problem that I've been having in a lot of many different parts of my life is communication in terms of work. I mean, talking to, it, it's certainly been an issue. And we're, one thing that I actually, I did talk to people is that I am going to be calling the Planning Board members, all of them, on a more regular basis. Because the normal, the normal conversations that we would have outside of, you know, outside of the Planning Board aren't happening. So that, and I think that's part of exactly, Maureen, of what you're talking about. The things that they just organically come out, you know what I mean? So, so I think just more communication is better. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. Okay, so let's move on to the approval of meeting, meeting minutes from November 12th. I also forgot to mention, we are being recorded by WinCam. We are being broadcasted on the government channel. And so anyone, if you speak while we go through our agenda, just to please state your name and address and to let you know that you are being recorded, the members of the Planning Board always know we are. But just for anyone in the public who is here. Let's move on to our meeting minutes. We have one set from Tuesday, November 12th. And-
So I'm just going to jump in. Did, I know that we're getting help. We really appreciate it. I guess two thoughts. The first one is, will these go back, even though Nancy did not write them? Will these go back to Nancy or who's going to get them? Because I, these took a lot of editing and I did do it, but I don't know where to send them.
Suzanne will be making book ready. Suzanne Gill in the Engineering Department will be making book ready.
So I'll have, I'll drop them at Town Hall with her name on them. Could you, Brian, if we get more of these, which again, I really do appreciate it. But could you read them ahead of time? They really do need more time than I was expecting. So it's, and it's just, there's, you know, it's, I'll stop. They need to be edited further. And I think we could all appreciate you're looking at them first.
Yeah, and I told Nancy that I was going to do this and I didn't. So, sorry about that.
Were these done by Nancy?
No.
No, oh.
These are not yet. Brian has had a copy of them in front of him. We actually talked about it earlier today. These, yeah, these are not in the same format as Nancy's. And they actually, I was actually going to say we can simplify them a little bit more, but, and I found a lot of edits, which I'm, I'm 100% confident, Maureen, you actually picked up as well. From like Select Men to Select Board. And there's some just edits here and there.
Well, I did that.
Issues there is on the back page, you know, it's not that hang a layout. It's an organize, it's an org chart of the town government. So I'm, I have a feeling you grabbed those. But-
I don't even know how to proceed with these. So I, maybe I-
No, no, this-
Brian, hang on.
Yeah, I'm in it, okay, sorry.
Why don't I just submit these?
Why don't you submit them and we'll bring them back to the board?
Yeah, and bring them back. Because they were, it was hard frankly. And, you know, that was, that's not her job normally, but, and we appreciate it. And it, I mean, I think with two rounds, it would be fine. But I don't want to waste time. This mostly what I did, I believe, was just clarification. I wasn't trying to change meaning at all, as I never do. But I still think Heather, I picked up Select Board. There were a bunch of things also.
There's a lot, there's a lot. And I know-
There was a lot.
More than I would. That's fine, why don't you submit them and then we'll come back as a board. Do you have, did you have anything that you wanted? I see Heather's now on. Did either of you have anything that was big and glaring on those before Maureen submits? So that we can incorporate all of it at once?
I did not. I'm sure Maureen picked up all the ones I would have gotten noted, so, no.
Heather Hannan, did you have any big concerns with the November 12th meeting minutes as of right now?
No, I did not read it.
Okay, all right. Maureen, so want to submit? We'll, we'll put them back on on the next time we go through our meeting minutes to approve.
That'd be great. And so Brian, would you explain to Suzanne, we just want them cleaned up, which is what, and then we'll read them. So it's not the last version, they're not going to be the book ready ones.
So, yeah, I was going to say that I did not know that these were, these were the minutes that needed approving. I thought they were a different set of minutes. So I will totally review these. You don't, I would, I will clean these up. Suzanne shouldn't have to.
Okay, so who's, I'm going to put these back, I'm sorry, all these people were listening. But I'm going to put these back in the bin for the Planning Board. And whose name should I put on them?
Mine.
Yours.
You know what, Maureen, do you want to just drop them off in my mailbox? I'll scan them and get them out to Brian faster.
Oh, that's fine. What do you got, I mean, sure.
Yeah, I'll just throw them, I'll just scan them and send them off to Brian, so he has them, your edits.
I, I am going to be at Town Hall on Thursday.
Oh, okay.
I will say, even with the scanning, and I know for everybody, I do deal with stuff like commas and periods and stuff. And with, even with a scan, I wouldn't be completely confident that it would be as easy to read as when you just see the paper. So why don't I just drop them at Town Hall? I'll, I'll take them over tomorrow.
Sounds like a plan. All right, let's move on to our next agenda item. We are on schedule for a Fall Town Meeting. To kick us off, we have a citizens petition that we told the, the citizen that we would welcome them coming to our meeting and discussing what they are thinking and proposing. And that the Planning Board would take the feedback, ask questions. And then as a board, we would come to decide if this is a, something we would support, we wouldn't support, or would sponsor. So with us is Mr. Stevens to go through that. And Mr. Stevens, if you would like to unmute yourself and walk through what you're proposing.
No.
John, we, John, we can hear you.
Oh, you can, okay, good. I just, my screen doesn't, well, that's my problem. All right, thank you very much, Brian. The proposals I have for the board, and first of all, just let me say that I appreciate the time and effort board members put in on this topic. One begins to realize the enormity of the challenge you've taken on when one tries to make just a single presentation to you. So believe me, I appreciate your willingness to put up with me tonight. The purpose of the presentation is to show to the board that there are a number of options for changing the zoning in that, that portion of the North Core, which is west of Main Street. The options are essentially designed to make any new project within the North Core on the west side of Main to make it more compatible with the surrounding residential district. The problem is it now exists, certainly as I see it, is that some of the proposals that have been put forward, for example, by Seaver Construction or more recently by Mr. Gillespie's company, are simply not compatible with the existing residential neighborhood which surrounds the west, if you will, the west side of the North Core. One specific example, I think, would be to refer to 51 Vine Street. That is the residence on the corner, well, Vine Street has several corners because it makes two 90-degree turns. This is at the intersection of Wedge Pond Road and Vine Street. And it is adjacent to 63 Vine, which is part of the parcel or a parcel owned by the Ryan family of Fells Hardware. This building, excuse me, the proposal put forth by Mr. Gillespie was to construct a building, as I understood it, to a height of 60 feet, which would essentially surround on the south and on the east, the building at 51 Vine. I can only imagine the diminution in value as a consequence of that visual blockage. I don't, I'm not, I'm not a Realtor. I don't have a specific number in mind, but certainly it seems to me that would be a significant diminution in value without considering anything else. So that problem applies to a lesser extent to other residential structures in the neighborhood. None of them are quite in the proximity that 51 Vine is. But for example, one might compare the result contemplated, at least by Mr. Gillespie for 51 Vine, versus that on the other side of the street. I believe the number is, I want to say it's 52 Vine. Thank you, that's a 52 Vine, which is the closest, the closest res, single residential structure to the residential apartment complex at 666 Main Street. And I think as one can see from the, the Google view here, thank you, Brian, the Google view, the setting for 52 Vine is that a significant remove from buildings that are somewhat higher than the residence of 52 Vine. Whereas if one looks at 51 Vine, a, that's a, yes, grays, I could use, I need a new dryer. The building at 51 Vine would be right up against the new structure proposed, for example, by Mr. Gillespie, and more particularly to the south somewhat. And it depends on whether the building at 63 Vine is preserved or not. If it is preserved, that gives them a little more space. If it is removed, then you are in a situation in which 51 is almost immediately adjacent to a much taller building. So I can run through the various suggestions for changing. I, I guess what perhaps the best way to do it would simply be to refer to the descriptions because I am, the descriptions of the various areas. Because I'm not sure that I see the reason for the distinctions between the way the different areas are, the way the different requirements for zoning are set out in each of the four areas. And in fact, I think that the descriptions that apply to the west side of Main and the North Core are certainly more similar to the Museum District or the Town Common than they are to the balance of the North Core. On the west side of Main, in the, in the North Core, there is one significant, significantly large structure, I would say, 666 Main Street. It is about the height of the savings bank across the street. The difference, I suppose, would be, or that I would see, is that 666 is setback significantly, I would say, not only from Main Street, but also from Vine Street. The proposals, and again, I haven't looked at the setback rules. The proposals that both Seaver Construction and Gillespie and Company proposed did not involve those kinds of setbacks at all. And certainly that is a change from what you see there. And to the extent that people look at other large buildings in the area, the, we can perhaps track down Vine Street first, simply because we know there are some significant buildings there. One is at 29 Vine. There's a bit of a setback there. 35 Vine, an apartment complex, has setbacks both in front and on the south side, which are quite significant. When I say quite significant, I mean at least 15 feet, perhaps more. And there is a parking lot on the, which adds additional space to the north. 29 Vine has space to the back because of a parking lot. It has space to the south because of a parking lot that belongs to Two Elmwood. And I should move on to Elmwood now. Two Elmwood is an older structure. It's been there. I, I'm not sure of the history exactly. I know it's at least been there 40 years and I suspect 60 or 70. The building is setback, again, to some extent, from Elmwood Street to, and I, that was an interesting picture there, Brian, where you, yes, the old Rotary Barn is gone. There was another house, that greenhouse was pre-existing until the structure went up at 36 Vine. Which actually does raise some other concerns that I have. Essentially, this neighborhood had smaller residential structures, single-family or duplex, not only on Elmwood, but also where Brian is showing us 35, this building is known as 35 Vine Street. There was, and I don't have a picture of it, but my limited understanding is that there was a rather attractive turn of the century older home some years back. The, a well-known Realtor in town, I believe, Bill Casey, who was nicknamed real estate for a good reason, acquired the property and combined it with a couple of houses on Vine Street, and we got 35 Vine. So over the years, this neighborhood in particular, although it was once primarily residential, single-family or duplex, has now attracted a number of larger buildings. Whereas other areas in the immediate, immediate to downtown, for example, to the east side of Town Hall or along Washington Street, have not had the same development, if you will. Certainly there has been a change at the Church at the corner of Washington and Mount Vernon, converting to condos, I believe, in the east half. And of course, the Mount Vernon House is located just a little bit up Mount Vernon Street. But otherwise, it's essentially single-family dwellings. The descriptions of the various areas, they all seem to speak to promoting and accommodating a mix of uses and encouragement of retail, restaurant and service uses on the first floor with presidential uses up above. That seems to be pretty much a standard terminology for each one of the areas. I just note, I'm not sure that anyone can speak to this in particular. But when one looks at the characteristics described for the North Core, there's a reference to the railroad spur edge. I, I'm not exactly sure what is meant by that. Perhaps the fact of the old Woburn, the loop. But if it doesn't refer to that, or even if it does, the fact of the matter is, of course, that the Museum District abuts the railroad tracks as well. So I'm not sure that I understand why the distinction is drawn between the North Core, the characteristics, and museum characteristics. However, of course, if one looks to see what is permitted, it's clear that there is a less development permitted in the Museum District than would be permitted in the, in the North Core. When one considers the number of houses, there are, I would say, I guess, I don't know this because I haven't walked through the area. I would guess there are perhaps four or five residential structures, single-family or duplex, but distinct houses in the museum area. And that's all there is on that side of the tracks, frankly, on the east side of the railroad tracks. To the west side, we have not only the North Core, but we have a much larger residential area. There are at least a dozen different single-family dwellings in that area. And if one looks to the Town Common area, the adjacent area on Dick Street has perhaps certainly less than a dozen, but certainly at least as many as a half dozen homes. So when one looks at the limits placed on construction in the museum area and the Town Common area, my concern is that those same limits are not being applied to the west side of Main Street in the North Core. Again, because of the adjacent neighborhood, it seems to me that is a significant concern. What I should do, I think, at this point is open, you know, finish, finish that section of the present, of my presentation, certainly. My plan is at some point, if the committee, the board wishes to hear from me again, is to highlight to a greater extent than I have to date those sections of the zoning bylaw, which it seems to me suggests that there is a need to adjust the zoning, in particular, in that part of the North Core that is west of Main Street. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say-
I just wanted to say one quick thing that, so legal counsel, I talked to legal counsel this week about this, because we were requested to, right? So basically, legal counsel feels that as soon as the planning board, if, you know, if the planning board wants to sponsor one or any of these articles, you know, that will set off one process. And for the ones that we will not sponsor, that will set off a different process that obvi, that legal counsel makes sure that whatever is in front of town meeting is coherent, and that if passes, you know, is legal. So we haven't reached that junction yet, because the planning board hasn't decided which of these articles they want to sponsor. So that's the hope for this evening.
Okay, members of the planning board, Beback, Deanne, would you like to start?
Sure. So I have just a couple of points, in particular, looking at, so if you look at the CBD zoning as a coherent whole, you see that the different areas that were delineated, for instance, north core versus town commons, they have different topography, and they have different existing uses. So the fact that we have different requirements for height, et cetera, in the different zone areas, is because they are physically different. So, I, I mean, as we've mentioned, in the last time, we, we looked at Mr. Stevens' proposal, for instance, the town common area is much flatter, and the impact of larger buildings on the surrounding neighborhoods is much larger. The north core, the residential areas are at a much higher altitude than Main Street. So one can understand why you might want to have different building height allowances in different areas. The other thing is that, one of the things we are trying to get is denser unit, or denser population in the downtown area for, we, smart growth, when we get back to actually caring about smart growth, ease of access to public transportation, walkability, for those who don't want to have cars. And when you look at the center, and you look at the areas which can accept larger buildings, then the north core is definitely an area which already has a number of large buildings, and as long as we ensure that we aren't creating, I think Brian used the word canyons, and perhaps Mr. Stevens did as well, then I think the north core is perfectly suitable to put in larger buildings. We look at the museum district, we're not seeing the same sort of, I mean, it's, it's pretty crowded there. I just think the north core is a larger, has larger lots, and is more appropriate. So I pretty much see the CBD as being fairly coherent, and plans to essentially tweak it piece by piece without looking at the overall picture, I think are ill-advised at the moment. And that's, those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Deanne. Heather, did you wanna, did you have any comments or questions?
I don't think so, I'm sort of still wrapping my head around this, but when we talked about it before, I'm trying to remember, I thought we were in agreement that we did not support these changes, unless they're different than last time.
They needed more work, and that's why the, that's why the group didn't feel comfortable doing anything with it, too late, last minute. And now, the, are, the, the language is certainly more mature, and it, it's more, it's more informed of where it should be, where, well, I mean, let me just, I'll bring it up here. So, I mean, this is what, this is what Mr. Stevens, citizen, or, I shouldn't say, it's the citizens petition that Mr. Stevens is representing, and is representing a neighborhood group. It, it's, it's these five petitions. Now, the idea is that the end, the end result here might be some, a different solution. What we really need to decide tonight is, like, what do we want to do? Meaning, meaning that, do we want to lower height? We can obviously change heights, and we can change what zone, you know, where the zones are, this is, that's what this is about. All of these petitions relate to changing height, and moving the zones around so that, which is all, we can do that, you know, that's possible legally. The question is, is do, do we want, do we want to do any of these things? And then, we, we, maybe it'll be a different tool, maybe it won't be five articles, maybe it could be done through three articles in a different way, you understand? So it's not like we're voting on these articles to, like, go, you know, we're, we're, we're not quite there yet. So we're trying to go through each of these tonight, and say, is this something that we want to entertain, and then maybe the end result is different? So the hope was, that was the hope, is that we could get some direction on these five things, and then we could work with, either take it on or not, or, like I said, those are the, that's what we need to figure out.
I'm just trying to remember what we talked about last time, where I thought we had some consensus about, maybe just the heights for the parcels that were right next to the single-family houses?
Yeah, we did talk about that, but we also then said, is like, but part of it is stepping down the building, that's part of the, in the, in the guidelines, and how, something that would get approved, it, it was, it's all through stepping down as you raise, as you go towards the, you know, it, it talks about scaling that back, and that's in, not only in the regs, but also in the bylaw, that was, that was what the other side of that, that it, it was not resolved, Heather, is the short.
Maureen, did you have some comments or questions?
Of course, so, absolutely, I guess, just to make sure Heather Hannon is clear, because I don't believe, not just I don't believe, I was, we were all there, there was no consensus about this. In the end, it all got scuttled because of the way it was drafted, and we assured Mr. Stevens that he should, if he were to come back, that we'd have more, and we'd have more time, and that he'd talk to the planner ahead of the meeting. Brian, I believe I'm accurately representing that?
Oh, I mean, I basically said, there, there was, there was arguments on both sides, and there was no, but the main, I agree, the main reason they went out was because it wasn't in a form that we could, it was too late in the game for us to actually say, yeah, let's do this.
Right.
It was not at all, yeah.
Right, so just for that clarification. So now, back to the, to, to my mind, there, there are two different concepts going on here. One has to do with the PUD, and the others have to do with just dealing with the height in some way, whether it's attaching this portion of the north core to the town common, or whether it's to create another sub-zone. Anyway, it deals with height. And I did appreciate that, I note that Brian did recommend one of these approaches. But let's go, could we start with the PUD for the, I want, the map that defines the PUD areas? Can you bring that up for us, Brian?
It's map seven-three-three, page seven dash sixteen.
Thanks, Heather. So we're still looking for the PUD.
Keep going, it's.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah. So here's where, it looks like we're going to be getting a filing, so if I, I'm focusing on the left side. I just can't say enough that when these PUDs were presented to the planning board as ideas, we did have some pretty well-developed schemes from Dennis Cologne. And as we're learning, what he showed us and what we're getting through the PUD process is quite different. And the PUD process, or as it's drafted now, as it's, not drafted, as it's written, basically just unleashes all the zoning, it's kind of, you give us the affordable, you can do anything you want, no height restrictions, anything. So to my mind, we've got what we've got, and that's a different topic of how, if we are on board or not with the PUD, the way it's defined, but on the west side, okay, so what's, what's the potential to happen here? We know that at the very top, maybe, Brian, you can get your little hand there, the little pointer hand, on the very top of the PUD two, there you go, thank you, you're so good, and there we go, that's where we're going to be getting presumably a filing. So that's pretty, I mean, we've gotten the filing, so that's locked in. Now we go further down, and we've got the, the liquor store, now that could be redeveloped. That's kind of a big potential to go into a PUD. Then, we've got the historic building, so that probably is locked in, and we've got the Bruegers thing, and that's locked in, it's got condos, so once they're condos, that's it, we're done. And then we've got the corner where Moriarty owns the property. So that, who knows, it's really small, but it's in the PUD. So I would say, the area where the liquor store is, and the area where the parking lot is for, well, it's a parking lot, right, folks? We know that's a parking lot, where it used to be a gas station. Those are the two vulnerable areas. The PUD is a real issue for this neighborhood. It's, and then, we can go back to the height topic, but let's just keep this map, it's sufficient for that. What's happening in this neighborhood is Elmwood has not yet come online, though, I mean, the units are being sold, but we, they aren't, it's not, it's not finished, and they're not occupied yet. And we're getting, we've got the filing now coming in for Gillespie's project, right around the corner. The amount of parking in this neighborhood is just, I feel as if we would be irresponsible to just continue to ignore the problem, and there is no parking plan in the world that's going to address the fact that there are so many units in this neighborhood, and these are not people who are buying without cars, these are people with cars. Once they get in, their parking space is designated in the new buildings, that we get, and we can control that. But what happens is, in addition, there's parking that's thrown off the street because people do have visitors, they do have people coming in, tradesmen, painters, or a plumber, or whatever. And then on top of that, we've got the synagogue, and we've got the church. You have a funeral in the middle of the week, which does happen, you've got the school, you've got the, there's, there's a Chinese school as well as a preschool, and the congregational church, the synagogue has a nursery school. The parking pressure on this neighborhood is extreme, and I believe we've got to get a grip on this, and we've got to really, we can't just do a parking study, that's not going to answer the problem. We've got to understand that this kind of density called, that's provided for in the PUD, is just clobbering that neighborhood, and it's, it's not even, there's no place for that, they're strangling. And I just feel that, I will say for myself, I put a lot of time and effort and a lot of political capital into supporting the rezoning of North Main Street to deal with what goes into the side street, and that we owe this neighborhood similar respect and support, and trying to figure out how to, the kind of strangling that's going on in this neighborhood. It's just, it's too much, it's over the top, it can't take it anymore.
All right, Maureen, is, am I up?
I got, well, let me just wrap up then and say, so I think, I guess, so I do think we have to differentiate, and then I'll be done, Heather, we do have to think about, what are we doing with this PUD? For now, we can just keep the PUD the way it is in the zoning, but at least, let's change the boundary to secure the rest of the potential development, or who knows what's going to happen? And then, so that's one issue. And the other is, I do want to go back to Brian's one recommendation that he did support, which was, I think it was, okay, it was the number three, reducing the special permit heights. So I'd like, I hope that we can talk about these separately, as two different ways to go, to try to, I would say, help, or at least, I won't even say we're going to help the neighborhood, it's, they're in deep trouble, but to, they're struggling, but somehow can we make, make sure it doesn't get any worse, and it's really pretty bad right now? So that's it, thanks, Heather.
You're welcome, Maureen. So my take is, Brian, if you just stay on this map for a second, when you look at the PUD, and you look at the, what we know the sites require to get to a PUD, and the amount of requirements in affordable housing, diversity of housing stock, you know, so condos and rentals, and diversity, sizing, and diversity and affordability. I do not believe that the sites to the left of, which is also the west of Main Street, I do not believe that those sites can accommodate what a PUD is trying to achieve. They can accommodate the fifteen percent, which is applied universal over all of the CBD, the ten percent affordable with a capital A, five percent affordable with a lower case A. I believe that they can do that, I do not believe they can actually even really meet the PUD requirements, and therefore, I am comfortable with taking it out of the PUD, because to be able to get those requirements in there, on an economic standpoint, they have to go extremely high, and that is not what the town wants. So they're not really the most compatible sites to, to go for that height. It doesn't mean that someone couldn't come in at the liquor store, purchase that property, and do full affordability, it just means that, based on the guidelines, we have that site to meet those guidelines, couldn't meet the PUD. There's also, as Maureen pointed out, when you look at all the sites, we can't merge those sites together anymore, a lot of them, we have a historical building, snuck that dead center in the middle on Main Street, next to the liquor store, next to the Bruegers building, that, you know, there's no more merging of sites at this point. Elmwood, the whole point of the PUD was to look at merging those sites, it's not going to happen. When the PUD was created, Bruegers didn't have its extra story on it, and the Fels wasn't going in the direction they're going. So that's, I'm, I'm fine with removing this out of the PUD, and I actually think it'd be beneficial to look at PUD one as well, and remove that potentially out, pending on what's coming in through Waterfield Road, which we, the Waterfield, because that whole intention was that the town was going to work with the owners there to create a PUD, and it seems that that is not the plan, but it could be. So I, I haven't seen what the proposals are that are coming in for Waterfield, but if that does not, if the town is going independently of the other two sites, I think it'd be worth a planning board looking at, is a PUD really realistic in that location? So I, I think we should, as a board, be looking at PUD, and really, realistically, what is the potential for creating these PUDs, and what is needed? PUD two on the right side, the east side of Main Street, has tremendous potential to mate, meet that PUD requirements. They can do it, they have the height, they have, they're not up against these, you know, the lower-height homes, they also need the height to deal with some of the water and the flooding area. So I am, I feel that it's actually achievable on the east side of Main Street, I don't see it achievable on the west side. Going, so I would be fine with removing the west side of Main Street and recommending town meeting that get removed out of the PUD, because it's just not an achievable thing to do in that space and meet all the requirements, they're just going to end up in a circle. Then, looking at the height, the one thing I'm worried about, and Brian, did you grab the height of what's coming in at, on Main Street, the proposal? Did you grab that height for me by any chance?
There was a revised one that they had submitted, or not submitted, they had bounced off the design review committee recently, and I was actually looking for that one in the middle, I need a few more minutes and I could find it, but there's what, there's a revised one, based upon the comments from the planning board, I did, I believe I did send it out to everybody, but I'm trying still to find that one.
Okay, so what, why I asked Brian to grab the height is because that gives everyone kind of a base point of what we're talking about. When, when, as John pointed out in his presentation, there, and as we saw in the images, as Brian was scrolling down the streets, there are some very tall buildings in the north core on that side of the street, and I would like to make sure we get the heights of those buildings before we go down the road of considering moving it more to the town common. Town council did note to us, if you want to pull up the, I know Brian's looking for that height real quick, the seven thirteen height map. The seven thirteen height map, seven three thirteen height limits. That there are components of the town common that are inside the north core and that there is inconsistencies in the boundaries that really should be tightened up. I think that might be beneficial of us to get the heights of the existing buildings, see how many buildings, what, what that actually looks like in numbers, because there are four or five story buildings that are up against Vine. And I think that really helps us be better informed on the component of, do we move forward with moving the west side of North Core into more of the town common heights or keep it where it is? I think the heights of the North Core, the west side is going to lead us to keep it inside the, um, the 45 foot North Core height. And if you can hear my kids in the background, they're in a different room, but they're very loud. So my apologies. But that's where I'm going is I think it's okay to take them out of the PUD, that section out of the PUD. But I don't think as of right now, until we do a full height analysis of the buildings that are there to, um, go further with moving from the 45 foot height to the 40 foot height. Yeah, that like the town common has until we get those heights. It doesn't mean that, um, you know, next time we meet, we get those heights and we're like, oh, obviously everything is right at 40 feet. Let's move it. And I, I also want to know the height of that historical building as well on Main Street. Because that, we don't want to, um, that is a great, great building in terms of proportion and scale. Design wise, it's great as well, but it does give good proportion. And I would like to know what that height is so that we have a better idea of how we're moving up towards up the hill. And how those heights would look. So I just want to do some more study before I go and say, I agree or disagree with, um, Brian and a number three. But that's where I'm at and, um,
I'm going to jump in. I agree with everything you said. How do you like that? I do. I, I also, Heather, I really, really appreciate the way you're analyzing things in terms of just looking at what the market delivers and what the, you know, so your discussion, your preamble or whatever you want to say, about analyzing the PUD and what would happen there. It just, you're totally right. You may, you get it. You're, you understand the business model and it's just, that's, that's it.
Well, let me jump right in because apparently I don't understand the business model. So here's my, first of all, uh, six fifty-four Main isn't coming in under a PUD. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, by a long shot. They don't have 25,000 square feet.
Right. So PUD on that side of the street is moot regardless of what we do. So I don't see an urgency in removing the PUD on that side. Now, it seems like if we're going to remove PUD three, it's been suggested we remove PUD one. Ten Converse Place, which is at PUD three is, uh, uh, the board has achieved no consensus. And there's certainly some very strong opinions on the board that, um, achieving anything under PUD three would be too large. So essentially we're getting rid of all of the PUDs and we're getting rid of the only instrument we have in the center business district to go above and beyond the 10 plus five affordable housing. So for whatever reason, if we're going to, that we decide or that we choose to remove the PUDs, we now have one less lever to use to increase affordable housing. So either we give up and acknowledge that what's going to happen is we're going to get a lot of smaller developments, which will ensure that they go in under the affordable housing numbers so they don't have to build. Or we come up with another way of increasing the affordable housing stock downtown. I think we can all agree that, that 15, 10 plus five is not going to do it. We're not even keeping up with, you know, let alone dealing with the backlog of affordable housing. The additional, the new units won't even get us to the 10% the state's mandating. So I would like the board to, to, to come up with a, and what's the replacement? Cause getting rid of the PUDs may be popular, but it doesn't solve, I think, the issue the PUDs in part were designed.
We're still not proposing to get rid of the PUDs. The issue is that the idea of parcel assembly was part of the, it was a premise for the PUDs. That will almost certainly happen on the east side of Main Street. That's just a matter of the owners of the different properties have to all be ready to sell. One of them is definitely hanging on, but is expecting that he will be working with another owner in our lifetime. But this has, this was forecast, um, by Dennis. He's seen it. He lived it through Cambridge, um, East Cambridge where he did work. This just, a parcel assembly does take time. But if somebody, a buyer comes in and doesn't want to do it, then we're, we're really not driving this. This isn't eminent domain. This is, this is, this is just zoning. And then you'd see what you can do by, um, guiding the zone, guiding what people deliver. But, um, there is this pragmatic aspect and we're learning and we're seeing that for some developers, just going to the special permit is more, um, it's more, it's, it's immediate and it's profitable. So we're, there we are.
Right, but that doesn't answer my question. If, if, if we are just going to go through special permits, we're, I mean,
Well, I would say, okay, let me answer you. Where you're going to see is, um, number one is PUD one, the town owns the land. So that's a different animal. Answer number two, PUD two, I do believe that you will see some parcel assembly going on, on the east side. And actually of the number of units that were forecast for development in the center, this was where the largest number, uh, was anticipated. So it's going, it's just not going to happen overnight. And by the way, we did drag the grocery, or draw, whatever, moved the grocery store into that lot. And that's another place where we could be doing a more aggressive approach. We could be asking, I was on the board when they asked for a special, when the owners of Stop and Shop were looking for a special permit. And we said no, and we actually brought, there was a pretty high level person who came in. And we said, we really would like to see that site redeveloped with, uh, mixed use, the grocery store with housing. And those types of development can be done. So, but to answer you more broadly, Deab, um, this is something that is part of, I think, our next, um, discussion. That if you look, and I'll keep saying this over and over, if you look at Lexington, you look at Concord, both of them have very small scale centers, um, business cent, town centers, and both have achieved their 10%. And what we saw on River Street is the reality of how you get your 10%. These, to do a good 40B, you need to make it profitable. It needs a lot more, um, you just need a bigger footprint. And those big footprints aren't going to be achieved in the center.
I think also to point out, Deab, for the PUD to work, and it's one of the calculations that day, um, that our consultant had done, we needed a minimum lot size of 25 square feet. So all, everything that is west of Main Street doesn't have that square footage. Everything that's remains doesn't have the 25,000 square feet. I just pulled up the accessories database to get the areas of those lots. And, um, they're, um, they're 12, 10, 11, um, thousand square feet. They're not 20. And so they can't even, it's kind of re, it's, I mean, we can just leave it. So maybe that is because none of them actually qualify for PUD, even though they are included in the PUD two. None of them, unless they are joined together, qualify for a PUD because the lot sizes aren't big enough. So.
I thought that was Deab's point is it doesn't really matter because.
Yeah, it doesn't. It really doesn't. It's just kind of, I just, it's cleaning up. It's cleaning.
Yeah, it's the cleanup.
But yes, in terms of for those, um, residents around there who are concerned, this, they don't have the square footage for it. So you can't, it just doesn't work square footage wise to make it happen. In terms of PUD three, I do think they actually could combine, um, those sites as CVS, um, the, that area and could get a PUD out of there. One of the problems that the Converse Place is having on the PUD three is they are dealing with all the conservation, uh, concerns. They have a lot of other factors that are hindering that site as well. So that's just, that's just something that deals specifically with that. If they were able to merge that site with, say, um, the CVS site and stuff, they could deal a lot better with some of the parking issues that they have and everything that's subject, but they didn't merge with any sites. There's a standalone. So that's why it doesn't work right there. It just has so many factors on that waterfront. And PUD one, the other, if the town is going forward with something and not merging with the other two, they, once again, it's a mute point because those, those lots, even if those two buildings join are not large enough to go into the PUD. The whole PUD is if the town merged our land, which is up against a train station with the other two. So you're right, that we don't actually have to do anything for the PUD because it can't be done, um, under the way that it's written currently. But it does, I was just, it cleans it up because it's not realistic, um, under the square footage.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I'm just really frustrated that, you know, if we just leave the affordability to, you know, 40Bs scattered in those parts of the town with lots large enough, which are concentrated in particular parts of the town, that we're not, we're essentially segregating all of the lower income housing or the more affordable housing, let me put it that way. And it really goes against an equity argument to not try to put more of them in the center of town. And I just, you know, I don't have a lot of faith in PUD two actually coming to fruition. If, even if you took out the west side, I mean, that's fine, but I just don't have a lot of faith that that's doing it. And I think the PUDs is a means of trying to get affordable housing in the core, in the center business district are just not going to work. So if we're going to pull them and for very good economic reasons, as you've pointed out, then we have to come up with another plan. I don't know what that is. I know.
What do you like this, Deab? I agree with you.
Well, that's excellent. I just, you know, um, I, I feel that we can do denser development downtown. I think you and I disagree on that, Maureen. Um, but I'm, I'm just, you know, I just don't, I see pulling the PUDs out as a sign of going backwards in a way. Because we're not going to, we're just going to remove them and we're not going to replace them with something.
Well, let's replace them with something, but we've got.
The bigger, the bigger conversation as well. It's actually, the PUDs, well, it would work on the east side of Main Street.
Exactly.
In terms of affordability and how to encourage that and support that, isn't well, um, needs to be reevaluated in terms of the CBD. And how do we do it and, you know, um, and really encourage that? I think there are other mechanisms or there's other ways that PUDs, um, could be laid out to be more successful and not, um, end up in, um, the, you know, where Converse Places. So I, uh, I didn't mean to be isolating in saying that this is, we're never going to get affordability and we're not. And that's not what my intention was. My intention was in PUD, in the world, just focusing on PUD, it's not working. And these are why it's not going to work. And so maybe instead of, at this point, you did, the Vine Street doesn't have, at this point, Vine Street can't get any PUDs, um, built up along Main Street. It's, there's condos which are individually owned, um, the little corner, they, they just can't meet those PUD requirements. We know that they can't, no matter how tall you build that gas station, you're not going to be able to get, um, diversity of housing. You know, all those items that a PUD requires. So at this point, I think the bigger issue is for the planning board is to reevaluate the concept that the PUD is trying to achieve and go back and come up with a better concept that is more effective and actually works now that we know that the parcel assembly is really not going to take place as much as we thought, um, in most likely PUD one, based on, I haven't seen what, uh, the select board is up to with Waterfield fully yet. PUD three still does have, um, potential where the CVS is located and PUD on the east core. But other than that, um, there should be some more incentives to provide more affordable housing within the footprint. And we haven't done that in the center business district or offered it to town meeting for their consideration.
Yeah, so I just.
I'm in favor of doing what you're recommending. I just, in terms of the PUD, I just, that's as a, yeah, I could keep talking.
I, I didn't take your comments to mean that you were, you were not, you were not thinking of affordable housing. So don't. So I, I understood, I think, where you were coming from. I just think that if we're going to look at the PUDs, and I believe that it's a moot point that we take them in or out at this point, but if we're going to work on them, I think we should just remove them and replace them with something in the same, in the same, at the same time, rather than removing them now and then putting something new in later.
One of the, I think, points I would make is that the, um, Mr. Gillespie filed on Converse Place saying it was a PUD and yet he had no intention of this distribution of affordable units. So I think that we ought to at least on the west side of the, of North Main Street, um, just clean it up. It, it just, it makes it harder, I think, for even people who come in, I assume he's got a lawyer who looked at it and, you know, just to understand what we're doing or what, uh, you know, what, what, what we expect from a PUD. So I still think there's some merit to cleaning up, uh, the PUD boundaries. It's clearer. It's just cleaner.
Oh, that's a, that's a, that's a good argument, Maureen. Um, it would certainly remove confusion on the part or perplexity on the part of developers as to what's possible and what's not. So they don't have to interpretation.
Okay, so you guys want me to, um, kind of look at all the, based upon the conversation this evening, kind of come up with a new PUD boundary? Some new PUD boundaries?
I think realistic PUD boundaries is what we're looking for. The ones that are actually truly could be turned into PUDs.
All right, I'm just going to call that.
On.
I'm just going to call that a review, a review, a review of the, the PUD parcel. Um, and this, I, I don't know what's going to come of this before town meeting, uh, or before we have to have a hearing. Well, you know, gosh, like, I don't even know. It's coming up. It's got to be in the next four to six weeks.
Yeah, I, it might.
Right. Not that I don't have enough time to do that, but we have enough time. I'm talking about to get to consensus. I'm not talking about work for me. I'm talking about us getting to consensus.
I'm, I am actually fine leaving it. I, I, I am fine leaving it for right now, but really looking at it closely. I am more concerned about, I want to get the heights for the, um, the west side of all those buildings and really see what the heights of those buildings are. So we know, because there's a lot of historical buildings built up around Vine. And really get a better understanding of those heights because if it merits bringing, um, that side down to the North Common height, as we do, town council did recommend that we look at that map and clean it up. I'm talking about the map, um, seven point three point two height limits. Seven point three thirteen is the actual seven thirteen. Um, can you pull that up real quick? It's, there it is, page seventy. See how the green merges into the north core, but the boundary line, town council has asked us to, that had said, you know, I think this needs to be cleaned up. So I would like to get the height of all the buildings. Interesting enough, the one that is in green, um, the historical, um, it looks like, I think it was, they call it a dormitory. The really tall one that's at the corner, um, is in that 40 foot, which is one of the ones I was interested, um, in analyzing. But is already in the 40 foot height, um, because that one is, uh, interesting. And then look at what would make, what would be non-conforming if we went, brought it down to 40. And then the height of that historical one where the word north is right over it. I would like to get that so we can, um, look at those heights and really see what, um, what, um, forty-eight versus sixty-five looks like and get a better understanding of that. So that's Brian, that would just be listing the buildings, taking the, actually be taking this map and putting the height.
Yeah, no, I've been taking notes. I got it. I got it.
That's really what it would be and, and figuring that out. And it might be the building department who might be able to grab that for you and get a better understanding of that.
You, you might not like this answer, but do you know who probably spent a lot of money finding out all of these heights and building a model around it?
Mr. Toluquian.
Do you have any idea who it might be? I think it might be the person that just filed today. Do you think that's appropriate?
It's to ask him for the heights? Yeah.
I'm sure he has them all. I guarantee it. They've built a whole model.
Yeah, it too. So grab him if he has them. Grab him.
Is everyone, is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, that's easy. Awesome. Thank you.
One other thing that I think Maureen has highlighted, and that's the concern with on-street parking. And we're going to be facing this regardless of what we put in there. And there are other towns which have very dense cores, which. And there are other towns which have very dense cores, which have succeeded in controlling on-street parking through a variety of measures. And I am concerned that we are going to be trying to fix the parking problem with zoning. Rather than fixing it with appropriate. Actual regulate, street regulations. And so this is something, I know the select board is, is, this is their bailiwick, but. We really need to come up with, we need to push the issue to get permit parking or limited time parking. Or something like that. Um, it, it has, I've seen others, others, Cambridge in particular where I used to park.
We have all that.
We do?
We have town resident, uh, rent, you know, um, town center resident parking permits?
No, no, I mean on-street parking. Removing the ability for people to park on the street unless they have a permit.
But Deab, where it gets complicated is you've, first of all, you've got two, the church and the synagogue. And then they've got schools going on. It's not like one hour or two hours and it just, it's a different world from Cambridge here.
I'm just saying that even, even around churches and synagogues in Cambridge, they have instituted. Parking regimes which are flexible enough to accommodate those uses, but also provide protection to the residents. Um, so I, I think that we do need to look at how we control parking on the street. Because if all we do is say, we can't put units there because we don't have enough, that's gonna affect on-street parking. That really reduces the amount of units we can put in. And there, there may be fairly simple. Regulations which could ease the pressure on their neighborhoods.
Yeah, I agree with Deab. When, when Maureen, you were talking earlier about. Wanting to change the zoning so that we don't get a bunch of people parking there. It seems a little bit backwards. Like I would hate for us to limit density. And units because we're worried about parking if we can fix that in a different way.
We as.
One, the, this is, one of the things is, this is not. But this is Winchester. It's not Cambridge. We don't have the, and generally what you need is to have the kind of, uh. Transportation, public transportation that allows people to live without cars. Every one of these units that goes in will have one to two cars. Many, many of the, um, even when they come in with one car in the building. They're going to have visitors. I've seen how it's gone on, um, Vi- on, uh, what do you call it, on Dick Street. It's really changed over there too. So anytime somebody's got, they've got visitors, again, they've got, um. Tradesmen who come into the build, you know, work for them. And it's actually worse over here in this neighborhood because you do have these two. Um, houses of worship that also are combined with, um, school programs. So it's just, um, I mean, I honestly, I know that neighborhood so well and there's. You, uh, you are not going to be, it's not going to be the same as Cambridge. It's not going to be the same as Somerville. And it, we are responsible for these, the, what the people coming in and the new units as well.
I, I lived in Somerville with only on-street parking. Everyone needed a permit. You need, you had to get, you had to get visitors permits to allow anyone to park on the street. It's possible to control parking. In a very dense neighborhood. Uh, you know, it's, I just don't think we've done that.
I, I go in circles on this because we always say we, and I wanna make it very clear, because we even in our joint meeting. We brought this to their attention. They want more density. They want more, you know, housing. They're pushing, um. For a forty B at Converse Place, like. They haven't dealt with the parking and we, it's not in our authorities. We don't have any authority over it. We don't have. There's nothing that we, except keep going back to the select board and saying. We, we need you, we need you to review the parking. You want this density. You want more economic growth downtown. You have to address the parking. That is not, we can't, we can only do it on our sites. Um, and I think in the center business district is pretty decent. In terms of the zoning, but in terms of those streets and how they are used and the parking and the signs and. Everything, that is a select board and I, I, the only thing we could do is write them a memo again and be like. You know, we are continuing to get growth in the center business district and, you know, even the, um. Traffic analysis is gonna come up with the parking issues. And the only way to get that out of the equation is for the select board to address it.
So do we, do we weaponize the zoning to force them? I mean.
Yeah, it'd be better if we write something to them and try again.
I think it, yeah, coming up with a memo, um, that is. Uh, to the point. And try it again. And we just keep trying because we always run into the same conversation as a board. We did, there's nothing we can do except keep asking the select board to address it.
So even if I were sitting on the select board, I'd be trying to figure out what you do. When there is, and then, you know, I've lived in town long enough. What do you do when there's a funeral at this, um, church? And there's literally no place to park. And at some point, you're taking somebody who knew the deceased. And they're trying to figure out how to drop them off and walk, you know, your part going driving and driving and driving, trying to find a parking space. And then the parking, if you're too, you know, you don't, you don't know how long you're gonna be. There's going to be a reception afterwards, uh, after the funeral. And, or I mean, the memorial service, whatever it is. You know, it just, it's not working well, folks. And I don't know that even if I'm sitting on the select board, that I'm going to answer that. Because these are uses that are fundamentally in conflict. You just can't clear out the town center. On Tuesday at three o'clock for the funeral.
But, but we already have that problem now. Adding more units isn't going to fix that problem. If there's already a problem with large numbers of people needing to attend services. We're not gonna increase the pop, that population. So it's always going to be there. So that's a. You know, granted, we're adding lots of straws to the camel's back, but the camel's pretty burdened already. I don't think we're adding that much of a burden.
Well, maybe that's my point. Exactly. Well, you phrased it well, and I would just come to a different conclusion. At some point, I'll keep saying this, the neighborhood is strangling.
Can I say something for a quick minute?
Please do.
So, um, one, there's actually been a lot more consensus than usual. I don't know what to say about that. So other than that, other than that's good, um. Trying to get us back, back on task and trying to, um, well, not that we weren't on task, but I think you know what I mean. Um, so what I'm picking up is that this, for number one, the, the idea is that I'm gonna be looking at all these. P, all the parcels in the PUD and getting, getting heights and, and also square footage to see what actually could happen. We, we drew these lines, but does it even make any sense based upon the structures that are currently there? The other thing that I was basically hearing was about density and the fact that, well, we need to figure out is figure, um, we have about. Fifty units at Waterfield and about fifty units at ten Converse Place. That leaves about another hundred and fifty units. That were kind of slated, not that we have to hit two hundred and fifty or anything, but that's what, that's what, um. The numbers that specifically Dennis Carlon came up with based upon a review of the entire center business district. And with most, most of the coming in the PUD. Um, that would take time and whatnot. But anyway, you're saying that would take time, but we're, we're, you know, that's two hundred and fifty, but I think we're gonna have a hundred units sometime in the next couple of years. Um, so the question is, whatever we're gonna do, doesn't, you know, what is it, is it going to change that number at all? Or are we saying that we wanna get, I'm actually hearing both, that we wanna have density in the town center. And that we don't really wanna have density in the town center. But as it relates specifically to what we're looking at right now, the cit- the citizen zoning petition for review. I'm picturing up, we, we're willing to work with them on number one. This plan unit development, just to look at all of the PUD in general. I'm gonna move forward with number one. Number two, um, I was mostly feeling that this was not a good idea. And, uh, the reason, the main reason I did was specifically because of the floodplain and the idea of saying that anywhere in town, you can go to forty feet. And in the middle of the floodplain, in the middle of a downtown district near transit and shops and many other different services, town hall and schools. That the idea is that we would wanna have a little bit more than with a lot anywhere else in town. So I wouldn't wanna change the by right height at all. It looks like people agreed with me there. Number three, um, this is the one that I did agree with. Um, I did look up the height and I don't know if I put it in the chat. The height of six fifty-four that came in today, so the actual height of what they're applying for. Is fifty-two point eight three feet, fifty-three feet. And I honestly think that everyone on the board, and correct me if I'm wrong, kinda feels that that, that at least the height of that building makes sense for Main Street. Okay, hearing, hearing, yeah, I mean, I mean, that, obviously it matters how it's executed. Everyone knows that. But somewhere between fifty, I mean, fifty-three feet, the, the way it's looking. It's looking like it will work there. And obviously people will say it looks so big and it's huge. They will, because it's gonna be bigger than, and it's gonna be right up on the street. Um. Um, I'm saying it like it's going to get approved, but I, 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 I shouldn't speak like that. But the idea is that we've been reviewing this thing for six months. So there's no surprises there. Um, that, uh, we didn't have a problem with the height. So, um, changing the special permit height going from sixty-five to sixty, okay. I mean, the idea is that a sixty-foot building is probably just. Just, you know, a sixty-five seems kind of nuts, actually. I think we missed that mark. Um, for that, and maybe it was because the PUD was lined wrong. So that's one thing, or this, or sorry, the special, the, uh, the height map was lined wrong. So that's something we're gonna look at. And then, um, the boundaries of the north core is really, this is related to the, to really. It's a question of whether it's in a PUD or not. Um, but I really was hearing that. Something about moving forward with this, but the timeframe might, might not be something for fall. Uh, but, um. But all of these seem worthy of moving towards based upon moving them around. Uh, in terms of the districts as well as the PUDs. Um, so would that be a good consensus?
I'm on board. That sounds good.
I'm good. Um, did going, I, I, I'm sorry, any, Heather, Deab, before I just go into the second point of items to do. From this conversation.
I, I think I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Heather?
Yep.
Okay, um, my other thing is, did we want to send a memo to the select board? Just be like. Have a, uh, let's have, can we have a joint meeting to discuss this? Or can you take this on your agenda?
Which part, the?
Um, regarding about increasing the density in the downtown and coming up with a plan for increasing the part, the. Demand on the parking going forward.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I think if we point out that, I mean, in the letter, that. The ability to increase density depends upon having control over those streets, which we don't have.
Okay, um. Do, 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 do. Okay, um. Uh, do we, do you want me to write it in the next week? We look at it before I send it out? Draft something? Okay, I'll do that and I'll bring it back to our meetings. So Brian, for our agenda next week, we will have a. Review of a memo to the select board regarding parking in the center business district. Sound good? All right, let's move on. Um. Do, 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 do. Um, we have. The flexible zoning provision. I'm gonna put that on, on pause and go to, if that's acceptable with. My board to go to the petition three nine one two eighteen Sheffield Road, because I believe there are people on this call. Who, um, would like, probably prefer that we focus on that on our schedule and then come back to, uh, fall town meeting articles. Um, so the petition three nine one two is for eighteen Sheffield Road. And if you give me one minute, I'm gonna move my papers to go on to the next topic. Brian, do you wanna kick it off with your, um, your recommendations, your overview?
Sure, just a second.
You're probably moving papers like I am as well, to get to the packets. Um, so, um, if anyone, um, is here in regards to, uh, eighteen Sheffield Road. If you could raise your hand, uh, so we know, um, if. If you are here, uh, regarding this petition, um, if. Oh, um. So I see Liam Prescott has their hand raised. So what we're gonna do is, um, Brian Sekelly, the town planner, is going to present. Um, his overview of the petition and then, um, we will open it up to the applicants. Um, actually, usually before that, we also open it up to town engineering. Um, and then we'll open it up to the applicants and. Um, then the planning board will, um, review and comment. So Brian, kick it off. And I see that we do have one person who would like to speak. Go ahead, Brian.
Sure, um, so petitioner seeking a special permit, uh, to be permitted to construct in addition. Um, to an existing single-family dwelling that will be located closer to the front side property lines than permitted as of right. Um, they're also seeking site plan review because the, the house will be greater than five thousand square feet. Um, the house was built around nineteen hundred and the historical commission voted no adverse impact on the resource. With the condition that they moved the front plane of the garage behind the front plane of the main house to minimize the adverse effect on the streetscape. At their meeting on August third, the vote was a three-two with two members absent. They have a seven-member board, so. Um, so this is a, a two-car garage addition and a mudroom and the removal of some hardscape. Um. So the addition of the garage and the mudroom, uh, being about seven hundred square feet. Um, nearly all of the perimeter trees are being removed with smaller plantings taking their place in general. It's very nice. It is very nice to see the ripping up of the driveway. Um, there was, they're getting rid of a lot of hardscape, um, with this. Um, uh, was, and, um. But the left side back is, is really proposed for a lot of encroachment, which would then have small plantings to kinda shield portions of the house. It's possible that this could work, but I agree with the historical commission that the front plane should not protrude in front of the main house. And should be moved back in line with, um, with the front of the house and therefore. Uh, it won't be less, uh, encroached upon. Um, I can bring up the plans now in just a second. Um, I didn't, I didn't have anything else, so, um, it looks. Um, Heather, again, I don't know if you wanted to go through the board or we're just gonna go straight to the applicant.
Um, is engineering here? Did they have any feedback?
Um, uh, they did not see anything. They're not on, they're not on, but there were no issues.
Okay, um, is, um. Liam Prescott, are you an applicant or representative of the owner?
Yeah, so this is actually Christian Prescott from Latitude Architects, where the design architects consultants on this project. Um, I'm sorry about the confusion there, but I am traveling, so I'm actually using my son's, uh. My son's laptop for this meeting this evening. Um, hence Liam, not Christian. Um, anyways, uh, so. Yeah, I, um, obviously we've gone through historic and we've gone through, um. ZBA or DRC, sorry, design review. Um, and, and obviously you. Uh, you guys have those findings from them. Um. Um, and I, this is a little differently, we, 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 we were left to kind of talk about. Uh, this and get everybody up to speed, but it sounds like you, you guys are really in tune with what. The, uh, ownership and the design team, to include the landscape architects are, are trying to do here. Um, and I heard Brian just say that. Um, or Mr. Zalecki say that, you know, he agrees that this, the, this garage should be pushed back. Um, off of this twenty-five foot setback line. Um, we, we all know that there's actually a thirty-foot building line, but this house is non-con, nonconforming and in front of that already. So the porch is inside of that to include the stairs. Um. So I, I guess just, you know, what, what I'd like to appeal to the board here on this is that. Um. We understand from all three factions that we've gone through here in Winchester that. Um, that they're concerned with this facade of the garage being in front of the main facade. Of the, the home. Um, the existing box, if you will, here. Um, but, um, but we, we, we contend that it's actually. Uh, in keeping. But, but we, we, we contend that it's actually, in keeping architecturally, and it actually helps existing conditions. If you go to twelve perfect, here is the exquisite, this, you know, hundred-year-old, exquisitely-built shingle style with some Tudor kind of architecture also going on. As the house exists, these photos were taken by our firm back in the, in the spring. And, as you can see, the, you know, our clients have restored, kept, cleaned the property, the landscape, they have, they have meticulously worked on this to keep its, you know, the historical nature of it, the, the massing of it, the, the detailing of it. And if you go to our proposed garage in, in elevation, we have tried, we've tried to do the same thing with, with this, with this piece of architecture, and using the same detailing, same shingles, same rake, roof pitches. We've really tried to enhance the look and not make it a detrimental statement. And we feel it actually strengthens this home with the way that the site works, not only just in the architecture, but the fact that there was a house built before automobiles, where now you need automobiles, you need to house those automobiles, and they're not just gonna be out in the driveway. A driveway that circumnavigated very close to that side of the house and all the way to the back of the site, to a garage that is dysfunctional, a garage that the clients have said that they will, they wanna retain and actually reuse, and gone to great lengths in the landscape to, as, as Mr. Zalecki said, improve the hardscape, softscape situation. And you can see that in some of the, the landscape there, the L drawings to the very bottom of this, whoever's running the. So I guess we're here this evening to appeal to that, that, and, and that this isn't detriment, we, we, we feel strongly that this isn't detrimental to the streetscape, and we actually feel that this enhances the streetscape and enhances the landscape there on, at eighteen Sheffield. And, and anybody that's, butters have been in agreement and think that it's a beneficial addition, and that it, that it actually strengthens the, the, the things that the board is, is saying that they feel could be detrimental to this.
Hi there, this is the Warners, we're the homeowners, Nick and Jen. One thing I would add, I, I, I heard a concern about the, the trees that were being taken down. It's important to note, of the three trees, and one is all the way to the front on the road. We had, an arborist check out all three, the one on the road is dying, and the two other are diseased. And in fact, and severely leaning into a neighbor's property. And about a year ago, our neighbor actually requested that we take those two trees down, so it would be their real preference that they be taken down, because they're severely, those top two are severely leaning into their property. Because when we first moved in, there was also a line of dying spruces that we had taken down, and because the spruces were next to those trees, they ended up severely leaning into a budding property. Echoing what Christian had said, we've talked to and surveyed all of our adjoining and abutting neighbors, and they're strongly supportive of the plan, and they feel like it will really enhance both their experience, the ones who are in our, adjoining our backyard, as well as the ones directly across the street as well.
Thank you, members of the planning board. Do you have any discuss?
Well, I'll dump them. Oh, Heather, I wanna go.
Well, we'll probably say the same things about the garage, but first I'll just say, this is one of my favorite houses. I think it's a really beautiful house. I am disappointed, though, to see a garage put in the front, I think that will ruin it. I agree that it shouldn't be in front of the main plane of the house, and I'd prefer to see it actually as like a side entry, like you have to drive and turn, so that you don't see the garage doors. Because a house like this, you know, you would have never seen the garage up front like that.
I, can we, and if, since we're here looking at street view, if we go to number twenty, which is right there, next door to them? So, yeah, there, there, there's the house, and this is an updated from.
Other direction.
Other direction. Heather Von Miering, are we really going to get into a dialogue here?
Uh, no.
Can you please help us?
Yeah, so typically, Mr. Prescott and Mr. and Mrs. Warner, we usually mute, and then the planning board just talks. The zoning board is the ones who make the final decision. If the planning board has questions, we'll ask. So.
Okay, so I'll take my turn. One of the bigger problems here is, once these things get started, that, then the other people start to say, well, that's how it goes, and you find that they just keep going and going, it's time to stop this. This is a historic resource, the historical commission's recommendation was the condition that the garage be set back. I don't even like it attached the house in any way. This particular house, I know extremely well, that I knew the family, I am guessing it was two owners ago. They raised their, not this one, in fact, that one, as far as I'm concerned, I'll use the word, that other one we just saw has been ruined. This house is designed by an architect, it's got its integrity, it's got its balance between the two gables, it's got its massing, the porch fits within. Maybe the whole point is that it's, there's a dominant mass, and the dominant mass is the house, it's not the garage. But you stick a garage forward of the main plane of the house, and the garage dominates the house. It's the wrong emphasis. This is, tons and tons has been written about this in planning and in architectural design. We know that forward look, forward-fronting or forward-positioned garages are really unattractive. They don't work with the streetscape, and they are, they tell the pedestrian that you're welcome to my garage, and by the way, here's the door, you have to go over, you know, go back here, and you find the house, and you find the garage, you find the front door. I've known the house so many, so well, and the owners, I remember when they replaced the shingle with more natural shingles, they just, they did so many nice things for that house. And it just, it just, it does distress me to see, when I saw this, I was, I was just horrified, frankly. So I hope that we can create a strong message to the zoning board that not only is this inappropriate for the historic resource, but it is detrimental to the neighborhood.
Diad?
Uh, I, I'm gonna join the choir here. I really, at the very least, concur with the historic commission's recommendation that the, that it be pushed back behind the facade of the, of the house. I can't, Maureen said it quite well, so I won't add any more to that. My only consolation is the removal of the large trees, they are Norway maples, which are nice, large trees when you have them, but also rather invasive. So, that's about the only consolation I have there. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you, Diad, so I'm gonna give my thoughts. I agree with the historical commission as well. When you go through Sheffield and you look consistently, all those garages are tucked. Either they're pushed back or they're detached. Some are tucked down below, on the other side, down below and under. It's just consistently on the street that those garages are not prominent, and that the historical nature of this, this street stay intact. I believe that the house that is next door to it, that was being discussed, that would not have passed. That would not have been approved today if they went through permitting. It's, it's just, the impact on the historical is significant on this house. So I am going to agree with all, all my members of the planning board that the garage needs to be moved back. With that, I know that when you look at the plan, Brian, can you bring up the plan? You're going to move into that side yard setback, I would be more inclined to support that, and doing the, going up into that and support that to get the garage in there. And I know that there's a chance that when you're designing this and laying this out, you want to minimize that, but I think for such a historical resource, that it, this, it is, makes sense at this point to go into that side yard setback, to get in, to get it pushed back. Also, the, from a design standpoint as well, for the historical, you have multiple planes, which are exquisite on the existing house. You're adding a whole nother level of planes coming in with the garage, and if you push it back, it'll let the historical plane of that house stand and be as strong. So I think there's just a little bit more tweaking that needs to go to keep the historical importance of this house intact, and also the impact it'll have on the street for the longevity of the streetscape. So, I agree with the historical mission, and otherwise, I, I have no issue with the landscaping, it's excellent. And I, and the function and the purpose, I'm, I'm not against, it's just getting it so it lets the historical facade read strong.
Okay, so just to recap, so that, just to always help with voting, this can, it's a little easier sometimes. So, obviously, it sounds like everyone is supporting the historical commission. That's a four-oh for at least us supporting the historical commission. And then keeping the, the mudroom the same size, and you can, that plane is fine, but then bringing the, this plane of the garage to be even with the porch or the, or the house, that, that was what was unclear.
Behind the front facade.
Behind here. So, me, so this is the, there's the porch, and then there's the house. Are you saying, are we saying to move this, the front of the plane back, you know, it looks like, I don't know, four, you know, a few feet, four feet? Are you talking about moving this entire, this entire thing all the way back to here? Then, it does probably, I mean, I just wanna say, if, if we're moving it, then are we actually saying it's a garage, like, can it actually fit there?
I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not on board with any of this, so.
I'm just trying, that's why, that's why I'm trying to collect everyone together here and figure out.
Right, I don't think we have to be, I think that we can be together on the unfavorable action, and that we want the house to be the dominant, to dominate the whole, to retain the historic facade of the house. I think that's the main point.
Wait, is the mudroom new?
If we move the garage back, then it does, if the mudroom is there, what's that, what's happening there? I don't, I just, I think, I don't wanna get into the mudroom, just the garage needs to be pushed back.
Heather, you are, yes, the mudroom is a new, is new, and is a new, and then they're carrying a stronger cornice line at that mudroom.
Just to add some context, historical commission said to move the front plane of the garage behind the front plane of the main house, which to my mind means moving it not behind, back behind the porch, but all the way back behind the, the house.
Right, yeah.
Which is impossible.
Yeah, that's what I was trying, thank you, whoever said that, it's true, it's like, so you're basically, it's, it's either, I'm saying, don't put a condition that makes no sense. That's what I'm trying to say here. You're saying, if you're saying, oh, move it back, that's one thing, but the other, another thing is saying that if you move it back, then it's, it's saying, no. It's saying that, don't, it's not move it back, it's. I just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure that everyone knows that you wanna, if you're gonna put a condition to move it back a few feet, that's possible. But let me get back in the plane, or not into plane, into the, into plan. This garage cannot fit there. So it's either no garage, or move it back a little bit.
Now, there's a third option, the garage goes back into the backyard.
Exactly, thank you, Diad.
There is another option, now that is something that the homeowners may not wish, but again, as Maureen pointed out, our concern is with the view from the street and how it impacts the massing. So, if the only way that garage will work is to put it in the back of the house, then that's where it's gotta go. We've had a similar concern with a project that backed up on, I've, one of the, one of the lakes, I believe.
It was on Everett.
Yeah, triangular lot, and the problem with putting the garage behind there was because there was a topography change, which was rather ra, rather large. And I know the board was really torn on that decision, and allowing it to be in front, or visible from the street. So, here, I think, you know, it's, it's possible, they might be able to put it back there, I don't know, but.
Yeah, well, no, well, so it's, it's more narrow here, so if they do put it behind, it, it, I mean, it, it. I don't know. I just wanna, again, I just didn't want the board to put a condition on it that made, that didn't make sense.
I think, I think we need to leave it open to the design team to figure it out. There are, there are options all over the site of where it could go. It may mean that there's impact to the interior of the building, but that we, we don't really fully look into, because that's not, we look at the, the historical resource from the outside. So, from our, and when it's only a recommendation to the ZBA also. So I think we leave it very open, and we just say that we agree with the historical commission, and give our recommendation, and have the ZBA work through.
I also wanted to flag, maybe I'm the only one that thinks this, but that turning it so that you don't see it as, you know, the, the garage doors would be helpful too, no matter where it goes on the site.
I agree with you.
That, that'll be an interesting challenge.
Well, I think, again, it just needs to go back behind the house. That's what they, what was being done by the time, traditionally, that's a standard, I mean, that's what was done before, and that's what should be done again. They wanna pull it back so it's closer to the house, that's an option, but I don't wanna, I wouldn't wanna see this. The, what, the integrity of the massing of the house, the beauty of the house, end up being compromised by a garage.
So, I mean, the other option is they could pull the garage all the way up closer to the house, and make it not square with the house, and do a mudroom that connects from the kitchen to the garage, or.
Right, right.
You know, there's a lot of options, I don't think we're gonna be able to solve it and tell them what.
Agreed.
Any direction on that, because there's a lot of other things at play that are outside of our, our, our review. So I just, I think it's, it's just not, it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit.
So, I, I'm not sure we wanted to say what the historical commission did.
Yeah.
It was that we don't, that we recommend unfavorable action, and believe that the garage needs to be, what, located in such a way as to not over, not conflict with the house.
I think it's fine to make suggestions, because otherwise, the ZBA could just say, yeah, just try to move it back a little bit, and they wouldn't have captured our concerns.
Okay, agree.
Well, I've got a whole list of, and Brian, I can, I can submit, like I did last week, my write-up of everything we've got. So I've got compromising the integrity of the massing of the house. It's inappropriate for the massing of the neighborhood, most garages are subsidiary to the home. We support moving it into the side yard setback to allow garage to be pushed back. This, the, creating the garage adds a new plane to existing planes, pushing back allows the historical planes to retain their prominence. I guess coming in with located to not conflict with the house comes in there and saying the same thing. Redesigning it so the garage doors are not visible to the, to the street.
You got it, it's good, Diad, thank you.
Okay, so with all of those in the backdrop, does someone wanna, oh, sorry, I'm taking over your job, Heather.
Oh, I was just, I thought you were just gonna go do it, I would entertain it more.
Okay, I can, I can, I move that we recommend unfavorable action based upon the points I just read.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Me, I. Nope.
Both of you went?
Hannah, Meister.
Von Miering, I, motion passes four-oh with. Bon Mering, aye. Motion passes four oh with Craigor absent. Moving on to petition three nine one three, Sixth Country Lane. Brian, wanna kick us off? Um, and before we go, is there anyone here from Sixth Country Lane? If you are, please raise your hand or to let us know that you are here and would like to speak.
Uh, nobody chatted either.
I'm not seeing anyone. Oh, yeah, you can use a chat or if you're on your phone, you can unmute yourself, state your name and we'll have you re-mute until it's time to. Those are on phones, but it looks like everyone is not on phones today. All right, so let's continue. Um, kick us off, Brian.
Sorry, um, petitioner seeks uh, three five seven, so, or to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family, located on a lot that does not meet the frontage and width requirement. Although it says, it says the width, but I believe it, it actually, or sorry, it um, it, it actually does have the frontage requirements, even though that is what is in, that is what they're applying for. Um, they're allowed to, to have fifty feet on a curb, but um, that's a technicality. Um, property is located in the RDA and the home was built in nineteen seventy. Uh, the historical commission voted no adverse impact on a historic resource at their meeting on August third. Um, I had problems with this cause few of the dimensions on the dimensional analysis are equal to the numbers on the plot plan. Um, but overall, I thought it was a carefully designed house that's inviting at the end of a cul-de-sac and I recommended favorable action based upon the design of the house and what can be seen from the neighbors as well as the letter of support. I have no further comment.
Were there any comments, Brian, from engineering?
No issues.
Thank you. Um, any member of the planning board like to comment on it? Take that as a no?
Yeah, this one was an easy one.
Okay. Nothing? No one?
It's a, it's a nice looking house. I appreciate the fact they angled the garage so that it's not in the same plane as the front. I am envious of their enormous uh, sweeping staircase that's coming down and I really wish them well in uh, paying for all of the heating that's gonna be required to keep that foyer warm. Those are my comments.
I guess, all right, I guess uh, no one has any comments. I think it is an exceptional design. I also find it very creative of how they work the corner. Um, I liked it a lot. Um, the materials are on point. Um, the, a lot of the detailing is in line with that area. Um, and that was great. Um, so I, I, no one is interested in speaking. I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move that we recommend favorable action on number three nine one three, Sixth Country Lane.
Do we have a second?
Yep.
Second, Hannah, and all those in favor?
Curious, aye.
Meister, aye.
Bon Mering, aye. Do we have no's? Heather Hannan, are you abstaining?
No, she must, she said yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed it. Um, I must have gone up. Four oh, motion passes four oh with Craigor absent. Thank you very much. Let's move on to our next item on to the agenda. So we were um, at nine oh five going to fiscal year twenty-one agenda items. Um, I would like to talk about the flexible zoning provision as that is part of our agenda items that we are, are talking about doing. Um, and just quickly go through that. Was there anything, so I wanna go back to the fall town meeting and finish that conversation up with members of the board. So um, Brian sent out the flexible zoning. Um, do we wanna have a discussion on that or do we wanna postpone that until our next meeting?
Can we discuss it?
Yeah, no, I, yep. Let's go.
What I had, what I had done here was basically take the, you know, we started a conversation last time. It was like, Brian, go, you know, deduce what we've said and come up with the next version. So um, what I mainly heard was that this is a good idea. We shouldn't limit it to historic resources. Do something about that. So we can uh, talk about natural resources and that way we could talk about, for instance, trees or wetlands or we can, we could expand further what those types of resources are, cause the historic resource is already defined. So the idea is to have flexible zoning that really is not really, it's kind of out of the bounds of a special permit most likely and that's why it's not a variant. But um, I, I should say it's outside of the bounds of what currently we have as a special permit. So the idea was this version talks about not just historic resources that could be uh, saved and um, and, and, but also about other resources. So that's really the only change throughout the document uh, that I did. So that, that's all.
So I'll jump in and ask, usually, like in the master plan um, for Mass General Law, it uses cultural resources and it doesn't say historic resources. And in our zoning, we've got historic resources. Uh, that, that, you know, the concept runs through and, and included in a definition. I'm having trouble with cultural resources, although that, I know the term and how it's used in Mass General Law for the master plan. So I'm wondering if we're, I just, I know that you can get into a real hornet's nest when you start with new definitions. And I don't wanna see this hit a lot of, whatever, um, people who love definitions in town meeting have a lot of problems. As it is, we're already now setting ourselves up to define natural resources. Uh, maybe we can do that. I don't know what you've got in mind, Brian, but cultural resources. To differentiate that with historic resources strikes me as not a good idea. But anyway, that's, I know it's, we're into the weeds here, but I think we're ready to get there.
Um, Maureen, are, do you, are you thinking that cultural resources is a superset of historical or are they disjointed?
Well, the short answer is we, it doesn't matter, but I think it's, cultural can be broader, but it's not really, there's not a whole lot more. In um, the world of preservation law, you can do, for example, sites. But I don't know that you would, I, 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 I just, I don't know, this strikes me as just a, as I say, a mess. I, I think our goal is to preserve the historic assets and we should go to the definition, even now, if we are, if Brian can bring that up, we've got something for historic resources. And I'm not sure cultural would be that different or achieve much to add that. So I guess my, or, so what I'm saying is I wouldn't add cultural, cause I think it's just, it's one more definition, one more debate at town meeting and one more way to fail. And even with cul, um, natural, we've gotta figure that one out and pretty soon.
So um, the definition of a cultural resource, just for reference, from the National Park Service, is defined as a physical evidence or place of past human activity, a site, object, landscape, structure, or site, structure, landscape, object, or natural feature of significance to a group of people traditionally associated with it.
Right, so natural feature is of a group of people, so it would be like a, a Native American's campsite or something.
Yep.
Um, sites, I think we wanna look at our definition right now for historic resources and Brian is, was, he's great. He's brought it up on the screen, so historic resource.
It actually would be interesting to add in the definition of historic resource, a fifth that does actually include associated with a group of people traditionally, so like, it, it's interesting, cause the person has to be significant.
Well, don't you think three is pretty close, is associated with the lives of significant persons?
Some would say, I think that is where the trick has been coming in, in recent discussions regarding.
Who is a significant person?
Yeah, and a lot of people define and have been in the past defining significant people, which has been pushing down those of minority groups.
Well, four would qualify and I, I, I honestly, what you're hearing from me is less is better at town meeting. Has yielded or may likely to yield information important to history or prehistory and history includes our local history.
And history is all inclusive, that's the other.
Pretty broad.
But um, it just, in the past, this, it has been used inappropriately um, to only highlight those of uh, large wealth and status.
Oh, I'm with you. I totally get it, but I think it, this is adequate.
So here's a, here's a, a sort of an orthogonal view. If we go to the Weston Development Plan, which is on the back of page two of the packet we got here. It has a purpose which, there are five parts or four parts to it. Minimize alteration of or damage to the natural and cultural features and topography of the land. I'm wondering, how does Weston define cultural, since they have left out historic completely? And, right, so it's uh, right down there in, in number two A. I mean, I, I kinda like the way this is written, cause it really includes a lot of context in terms of B, C, and I guess, I don't know how much we have D, we're certainly not a semi-rural town.
I also like how they note without any increase in permitted density. I do like that feature. So they could, they could have more units as it's currently zoned, but this is giving them relief.
Oh, wait, this does say that you can, but one of the things that Heather brought up last time, now notice this is only for single-family residential development. And Heather brought up last time that we might wanna consider increased density if it is appropriate.
That was Heather Hannan, but yes.
Yes, sorry, Heather Hannan.
No, 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 I just wanna make sure that anyone listening knows it, um, which Heather was.
Yeah, so I, I think that um, the first part of that sentence, I think we may alter it, but certainly A, B, and C are interesting to provide context. And they don't say historic, but I'm sure Weston cares about historical. So my point is, how did they manage to get cultural? Do they have a definition of cultural?
Oh, I'm sure, you can be sure it includes historic. Um, again, when you look at the master plan, um, I, whatever categories under Mass General Law, they don't say anything about historic, but they're talking, they use the term cultural resources and that refers to the historic as well as.
Right, so that's, do you have your question a few minutes ago was, this cultural resources is that the umbrella? And then historic is under it and the answer is definitely yes. Uh, the Ma, the Massachusetts Cultural Resource Inventory that we reference all the time, MACRIS, is a cultural resource. Those are all historic resources. So I can understand what Maureen is saying, is that we have a defined term that's historic resource that is perfectly fine and that, that's really the answer. It's not unbelievable, it's not bad, it's perfectly fine of doing what we needed to do. We could add to it. Um, but I, I, I'm, Maureen, I'm fine with taking out cultural, because it does, it, it's straight up, it's just more messy.
Um, I, I would like to, here's something else, just as a person who presented the very first demolition delay bylaw, it's been modified multiple times. I think if we can get something into town meeting, where this isn't, we've got um, Mainet Canal as well as this one on Harvard Street and these still come up, so I just, I would really like to see us give it our best shot at getting something through and the less complicated, the better.
No, I'm excited, I am excited about this one and I think that in terms of if there's any, I, I'm almost, I think this is actually almost more important or as, well, for, um, I guess, that, or as important as the, as dealing with the CBD, um, because we're getting applications in both places, meaning, for the flexible zoning is meaning everywhere. We're getting, there's, there's reasons, for instance, we would have used the flexible zoning provision probably, potentially, we could have done that through uh, with Abbey Road. Cause right now they're, the develop, we didn't, but as part of the development agreement is they're forced to go to the ZBA to ask for a variant to go five feet. It makes sense, something like that, that was something that the neighbors wanted, that it could have been a, made more sense to be done under a special permit.
Ooh, that's a good one.
So that's a, that's an interesting one that just happens to be coming up, cause they're about to file their ZBA permit. And um, you know, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll see what the neighbors say, but I mean, if they don't want it anymore, I don't think I'm gonna say, oh yeah, let's make a non-conforming house for no reason, right?
Right.
So, you know, why do that?
Well, I, I'm in agreement with you, Maureen, and we wanna get this to the fall town meeting. Um, I just would like to know that if we use the word cultural versus historic, are we leaving something out? We still have, yeah, and so I just wanna know what we're leaving out.
Yeah.
And then um, we still do, do we have a definition of natural resource?
No, we don't, and I think what makes more sense is to what do we want to take into consideration? And we just list that these are the things that you can take into consideration. One is a historic resource, another is topography, another is the use of retaining walls, meaning that, um, you know, we would be willing for there to be a, a setback for some reason if, if, if they had to build X amount of retaining walls, we wouldn't want them to build them that higher. For, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm, there's a million examples, but I think coming up with the specific things. So one is a historic resource, so rather than saying natural resource, I think we need to talk about and drill down on what are the things we wanna take into consideration that would allow for flexible zone.
So, Brian, some of those terms that we are looking for are currently used in the Heritage District bylaw. That, so they're looking at topography, they're looking at, I.
Well, it's just preserving all those things, yeah.
Yeah, but they're using those terms. So what terms exactly is in the Heritage bylaw um, that we, cause I think that, when that was written, it was done really well and a way to compass all the things that we're concerned about for this purpose as well. They, two different um, things going on, both related to historical in some ways. But I think those, the terms that were used in the Heritage bylaw would be a good one to reference, because it does deal with a lot of the impacts um, that this would help support in different, for different purposes in different area town and.
Is there anybody you could pop that up quickly, Brian?
Um, yeah, give me a second.
I mean, my concern is that if we make it really specific, we miss something and then it's not flexible. On the other hand, I'm concerned that the ZBA has some understanding of what they're supposed to rule on if it's too vague. So I'm kind of all over the map on this. Um, I take some comfort from seeing that the other towns that you've included here, Brian, are similarly vague.
This is chapter nineteen.
I think if you go right to the first paragraph, I saw something, oh.
Nah, well, so it's, it's really talking about what are the, um, I mean, we have to get into it, I think, might take a second.
I think it's specific to rangelies. The language is specific to rangelies in terms of topography.
Right, so that's nineteen, it's the ni, it's nineteen point two and it's talking about the, hold on, I'm sorry, everybody, I don't have this one on hand and nor do I hardly ever look at this, to be honest. We, we, we have two meeting, we have two meetings a, a year.
Here it is, nineteen point two point two purposes, historical, architectural, or cultural significance. So there, we already have it in the cultural significance, that have historical, architectural, cultural significance.
Can you just search for the word topography? I thought I saw it earlier, if you search backwards. No, that doesn't help.
The setting. That was the word.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, I can imagine that it's not just setting, but let's say there is a natural resource like. a large tree that we want to maintain. Um, that we would provide some sort of relief in order that they not, I don't know if that's part of setting.
I don't know if we do eat, we don't have cultural characteristics defined anywhere, but I think if you if you don't define it, goes to the general definition.
That was my understanding as well.
What's the general definition?
Meaning whatever the def- whatever the in the dictionary like.
Yes.
That's the default.
So maybe we need to um, come back once more with a concept of what 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 culture means rather than historic.
Well, no, I I I think I think that's the easy part. The easy part is I still think historic is the answer. The other it's the other part that we're not drilling down on, which is what are the natural features that we want to try? What are the natural features that we want to take into consideration to in order to allow a special permit for flexible zoning? One is one is topography.
Um, if I what I think is we should be introducing a definition for natural resources.
Okay, okay.
Um, I would ask Elaine Vreeland if she has some suggestions. I I really think she might answer it more readily than we will.
That's a great idea.
The definition of cultural is relating to culture.
Awesome. That's that's great. That's great.
There is a much bigger, broader definition of what culture, a customary belief, a social form, material traits of a racial, religious or social group.
We can, we can, we can look at changing historic resource a- as we go through this. Meaning to add something that maybe it's missing, but I don't think that's necessary. I think the idea of this flexible zoning will actually be able allow there to be more creative development in town.
Yeah.
I agree.
So so I think I think maybe we don't touch the definition of historic resource at the moment and if it comes out, great. But let's try to focus on what the definition of natural resources is and just go forward with the 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 historic resources and a new definition for natural resources.
Well, a definite.
And that, yeah, and that's it.
Yeah, yeah, that's I that's me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna move forward with that. I think we should keep moving. We, um, it's nine forty-three, so I I think we should keep moving. But I think that's great. Um, I think we're all going towards the same place as using natural resources and historic resources as a way to circumvent the need for a potential variance and make it a special permit. So I think that's great. We're all in agreement there.
Yep, and it has to meet the criteria of the site, the special permit and site plan.
Right, we will that we don't have to do any, yeah, it's it's just a special.
They still need to take into consider, they still have to meet all those requirements.
Yep, they do.
So we already have that already laid out. We don't have to go and define that.
Nope.
So that's great. Um, there are other petition potential articles that we wanted to discuss?
Wait, 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 one last thing.
Go ahead.
I think we need to put in some teeth in this saying that if you've been if you get this um, flexible zoning that there's some protection for the the resource so that you can't turn around and do something to it. We don't have anything in the language which says that you can't, you know, for instance, the next year go at the moment and just wait it out. So we need to put some sort of a.
Well, Dea, can I, I do want to jump in. Let me answer you. It's there. We're working with the example from Concord. It's in the very last sentence of the last paragraph, four point five point three. Um, it's the existing resource shall be preserved consistent with a preservation plan approved as part of or as a condition to the special permit. It's that plan that's uh, got to be executed. It's broad, but it there needs.
Okay, okay.
What does that mean though? Like if someone sells the property, how would someone know what the preservation plan was?
No, it's 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 a special per, hold on a second. It's a special permit. This is not, we're not turning things into by right actions here where there's no paper trail. So this is a special permit. It runs with the land. This is all fine and good. It's like any special permit that runs, you know, runs with the land. You can't, it had, those things have to be preserved as part of the special permit.
Right, I just want to point out, I've heard at least several people have complained to me that on Highland Ave, uh, the Abbey Road development, some of the lots that were there sold to another developer have been essentially clear cut against what at least my impression was that we requested.
Now, that, uh, just so we make that clear, the um, we have had engineering BPW look, go out there and I have also looked at the plan, look, looking at the plans, he's building to plan. That's all, I mean, he's building to plan. Yes, a lot of trees had to come out and it was horrible. It was on the plan the whole time. We knew that those trees that are coming out had to come out. They were on the plans that we approved. They, as of right now, the developer hasn't done anything wrong.
Okay, then that's good to know.
Clarifying that. Okay. All right, I think we made good progress on that. Was there any potential other articles we wanted to discuss or let's quickly just touch base on our fiscal year twenty-one agenda items? All right, fiscal year twenty-one agenda items.
Sorry, I was I was muted. Um.
Oh.
There was one other that's before us, um, that.
Oh, yes, this one.
Yeah, this is, this is the only other one that that is, uh, has been not formally requested, but um, yeah, so this has to do with um, home occupation. And there's been a a request to look at this really, um, i- is really all it is. And and they went to the select board as well. I'm not really, I'm not sure why. But um, so there's been a request to delete three point two, number four below. You can see it is in um, under home occupation. Um, as many people have either moved their office into their garage or they're planning on finishing space above a garage. So the idea is that you're not allowed to have essentially a home office up in an accessory structure on your property. So um, it's not, and 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 there's many per, like you, you're not allowed, you, if you look through this, there's, I mean, it's a a home occupation, the way that we define what a home occupation is, is basically a home office. It could be somebody with a a computer and a, you know, and a copier, multi fax machine and, you know, a few monitors. Like, it's not where the, you know, they can't manufacture anything there. If you look at the definition, it basically explains an office. So someone cannot have an office above their garage. And people are trying to build new garages right now uh, with space above it, labeling it as office. It's being denied. And then what they're doing is they're calling it bonus room and then they're allowed to do it.
So my my concern with this is only that if there's a limitation on the percentage of the floor area of the dwelling unit that can be used. But if we remove the prescription on accessory buildings, um, they could build a large building um, as long as they can house, as they can park people off the street that they could, you know, have a very large home office in an accessory building, so.
They couldn't though, because they're not, I mean, they're not allowed, um, uh, so they you you they they can't have more than one person that doesn't live in the in the family, like living at that residence be part of it. And they need a special use permit to do that. So there's not like a parking, much of a parking issue here. Because they know, someone cannot run a business and have employees coming in and out. Nor can they be sale, you know, a, you know, so like I said, it's kind of weird that the way that we define home occupation essentially is a home office. But that that is not a problem that that we have with the law right now.
Okay.
Well, I went through the same exercise. And basically, this definition is basically, it should just say home office. I mean, home offices are governed in Winchester essentially. Um, another way that this could all be done is that, uh, you know, I mean, I I mean, well, yeah, like you said, if you have to, if we have to take out number four, no home occupy, this is all that's being discussed, taking this out, then you would say twenty-five percent of the dw- it says this twenty-five percent of the floor area of the dwelling unit, it should be dwelling unit and any other structure on the property. So it counts, so it's saying this can still only be twenty-five percent of the whole square footage, you know, the, so that would have to be changed as well if we even would entertain this.
I thought it was taking it out and then making that modification.
Yeah, I would, I.
So many residents who are doing it and it's it's just the way that we are.
I I think it's, this came to a head because of what I just said, meaning that an architect was approached and said, hey, I want to build or or not the architect, the architect was approached by somebody and that said they wanted him to, they wanted to build a garage with an office above it. So they built it, so they've got some plans ready to go to a completely by right detached garage. Um, and to finish off the space above it so that this person could have workspace during the pandemic, right? I mean, um, you know, outside of the house, quiet, everything there. This is happening left and right. They put it in on the plan, they put office. And offices are not allowed in uh, in an accessory building. So like I said, so then they changed it to bonus room and then they could legally, you know, then they could be approved. I'm not really seeing this as a huge issue, but I don't know.
I I don't see it as a big issue either. I I mean, I think we should definitely take out number four. Um, I would like to amend number two a little differently from what Heather just said or what Brian mentioned. I would keep the twenty-five percent of the floor airing of the dwelling unit and no more than twenty-five percent of the sum. So that, for instance, you can't simply take your garage in your house, add them together and then put in some fraction of your dwelling unit, which is more than twenty-five percent.
Okay, so you, sorry, so you said, and not more than twenty-five percent of the floor area of the dwelling unit? And then what was the next thing?
And and no more than twenty-five percent. If it's in the dwelling unit, it can't be more than twenty-five.
No, it's not, no, no, it's, oh, correct, correct, yeah.
But that's different. So if it's in the dwelling unit, it still can't be more than twenty-five percent. If it's not in the dwelling unit, it can't be more than twenty-five percent of the total.
Got it.
I just want to make sure that we still constrain anything in the dwelling unit to be less than twenty-five percent. Because you want to, don't want them to take over, you know, half the house.
But you could, yeah, it could be not more than twenty-five percent of just the total floor area.
It should be fifty percent of the accessory buildings.
Yeah. Twenty-five percent of the dwelling or fifty percent of the accessory.
Alright.
That's cleaner.
How do, how do people feel about that?
Well, I'm fine with just taking four out, but the other language sounds okay. I guess. Um, I don't know, um, that's definitely going to generate a lot more discussion with the not, I mean, but maybe.
Why are we putting that part? Why can't you have the whole accessory building be an office?
Actually, that, yeah, I think it's fine to have accessory building be an office. It's that the it can't, that accessory building can't be more than I think it's fine also that it can't be more than twenty-five percent of the house. So if you're gonna do accessory building, it can't be two buildings.
You can build an, you can build an accessory, what is it? It's two hundred square feet. That's, that's, that's the, that's the start of an accessory building, something over two hundred square feet.
Yeah, um, I mean, if you want to build a, like a small shed and work in that, that's a hundred percent and that should be allowed.
Right.
It's really, it's really that the accessory building for home occupation can't well, it would come in through site plan. No one, um.
But why are we even typing that? Not more than fifty percent of the building can be used for our home office?
It should say that.
It's not the right wording of what I was.
I don't agree with that.
It's.
Well, do we want to limit?
Power the site, the site, the primary use has to be the dwelling.
So you're talking about this whole square footage of the accessory building. You're not talking about how much. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So you're gonna say that twenty-five percent of the floor area of the dwelling unit and then.
I think it's either. You can't do both.
No, no, I know. It's a question. I I I think one is, one is that, but then the other is then, well, is there a limit on the size of this structure?
But there has to be, isn't there somewhere in the zoning where you can't have two? Technically can't have two separate buildings on a property. There's a site, there's gotta be, I can't remember, but the top of my head and I'm getting tired because it's getting close to ten, but I, there has to be somewhere where you can't have two buildings identical in size separated.
Principal building, you can't have two principal buildings on a site, um, but so then maybe we just don't need this and.
I don't think we need it.
At all. And just keep that. But we also it did, so then we just floor area of I guess it is still the dwelling unit. Um, okay, well, then it's just taking out.
Four.
Four.
Yep, that's clean, I think, how many of we just found that?
Or did we want to say, so? Oh, no, we could, sorry. We could say, I think what Dia was trying to say is not more than twenty-five percent of the floor area of the dwelling unit and the access and any accessory building. So it's still, it's still the entire, it still can't be more than twenty-five percent of the total. Is that something?
Yes, yes.
Heather Hannan, what about that? Basically, still keeping with the same twenty-five, but instead of saying twenty-five percent of just the dwelling unit, if when it was in your house, now if it's gonna be out of your house, whatever is designated office can't be more than twenty-five percent of the total square footage of the, of the whole, of the whole, of all of the buildings on the property.
Mm-hmm.
Is that more in line with what you're talking about?
Yeah, because you had just typed that you could only use half of the building, so.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'd say it's not more than twenty-five percent of the floor area of the dwelling unit plus, um, the, any accessory structures. I'll get that wording right, but that's.
Somewhere in the, you might want the word combined.
Yeah.
Okay, I will get that worked out. All right, um, I could get that one.
Yeah, I think instead of plus combined with.
Right.
Maybe, I don't know, maybe plus does it.
Okay.
Okay, um, moving on to um, official year twenty-one agenda, we got like a couple of minutes left. Um, we're making progress.
I know, I'll, yeah, I'll, um, I'll just be frank at the moment. Um, so I don't know how much we're really gonna get through this. Um, we have done, we, I did not, by the way, I didn't even think we were gonna get here, if you want to know the truth. Um, but um, I mean, the way that these, I mean, I'm, I'll just, yeah, like I said, I'm willing to talk for another five or 10 minutes and then I think I'm toast.
Well, I think I'm pretty much toast already.
Okay, well, I think some of the, then I'll just talk for the two minutes that we have left because we should at least go to ten. Um, the way these were colors were set up is all these, this brown was the bylaw, the things that are related to bylaws. The next color was just a few that were related to changes in policies and procedures. And then the gray were the ones that was the general business. So I think I just need to that's, that is, that was just one question is we don't know what these colors mean. Um, it was just splitting up the types of things in there.
So Brian, I was the one who asked, instead of using colors, I think the point is that any document, it would be ideal if we can um, that it can just be printed in black and white. So just put little headings, like horizontally between the three different sections.
Sure. Yeah, I could.
Label them just the way you described them.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, what else here? I don't know. Um, it's daunting.
Well, I'm going to jump in. Some of them are, I would say, almost administrative. Uh, certainly getting the appointments made. I don't know where we are with design review. We have three people who are our appointees. Uh, and then Heritage District, we need that. Um, then there's stuff like the um, uh, my favorite, the subdivisions, we're working forward on that. Um, then there would be, I guess I would love to just start getting outside of our meeting, some sort of memo from you, maybe on certain topic. Like what would, I just, design guidelines outside the CBD would be really useful. Um, because right now the zoning board, anytime they get anything, um, they. Um, because right now the zoning board, anytime they get anything, um, they don't have any guidelines. So that might be something else, uh, that could be done.
Like the garages? Maybe we keep getting those?
Yeah, that's a good point. Yep, I love it. It's a good one, it's a really good one. And what they do, would do is they, just the way our CBD design guidelines amplify on what's already there. For example, we were discussing this evening, what does it mean to be detrimental to the neighborhood? Or what does it mean impact on a historic resource? And it might be, one of the points would be about that garages that are forward of the main house. Would be considered detrimental to the historic resource. But my point, my bigger point would be, some of this can be done outside our meeting, mostly with a memo.
Yeah, um, I'm just taking a note about the memo.
Subcommittees.
Yeah, I'm, I'm there, wasn't always.
Um, the short answer to your question is that, um, we are, Suzanne today asked, um, the two. Historic district, I believe, the two historic district, um, members that are. Um, up for reappointment, she has asked them their availability in our September meetings so that we can reappoint them.
Oh, great.
I believe, um, so that's already in motion, um, as a little update and.
Design review, there must be somebody.
Same for diet, same for design review, she's talked with Tracy about that as well. Um, who's the new chair, it was Eileen Kishari for quite a while. Um, also a note that people probably know this, Eric Noddleson is no longer on the design review committee. Um, that was, some people didn't know that.
Right, but he's not our appointee.
Nope, no, no, yeah, he's not, but that's just more of a, of a, of an update that I don't think many people knew about.
So, and then could you just scroll down this, because as I said, I think there were things that they shouldn't be taking huge amounts of our board time, but we could be. Well, okay, you'll love this, the planning board handbook, you were interested in working on that, that's not, um.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's gonna, that would only come before the board when it's in a draft format. If someone else wants to.
And then there was another one, um, oh, you know, I do feel that if, if. We want to interview other architects and urban designers, we have to just do it. So that's something.
That's just, yeah, that's just like putting it on the agenda kind of thing, like, like you put it out, like, we wanna, we wanna get three people in in two months. Or whatever, whatever it might be, and just get them in for interviews.
Right, and Heather, I know Heather Von Mirring and I both ended up with a couple of names, or I had some names and Heather Von Mirring. So, like, we got started.
Um, one thing that, um. Heather, Heather, one thing that Heather and I will still try to maybe do a long, one thing we haven't done in a while is a long-term agenda item list.
Right, that's a different concept, but right now I want, maybe, I would love for these to be sorted out in some way. But I know, for example, there was something with the subdivisions, um, our subdivision, uh, rules and regs that Art Krieger said he thought should be changed. And you seem to remember what it is, I don't, but we should.
It had to do with the closing, the, some conditions that we put on the, when we close out subdivisions.
And so now we're going to probably get a filing on lowering court, if I have the right place where the.
Not, not a filing that notices that went out to a butters.
Oh, great, so you can see how I'd love to get that one, we can just vote it, that doesn't go to town meeting. So let's find out what Art says, and I would guess I would support it, so.
Yeah, so a couple of weeks ago, we did, we did talk about splitting these into short, medium, and long-term items. I don't think we've, we've got around to doing that. So maybe we can, um, set aside some real time at our next meeting, if possible. To discuss these things.
So, probably, or I could work with Brian, or all of us could just say, I don't know how you want to do this, but I don't think we need to all discuss what's short-term, what I just.
No, 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 but we do need to actually come to the meeting with a short, long-term.
So our, our hugest problem is that, so we don't have a meeting for three weeks. Um, during this time, you're going to be reviewing lowering court. And you're also gonna be reviewing things that I send you related to town meeting. Uh, but we don't have a meeting for a while unless we're gonna add another meeting, um, you know, in the next two weeks.
We, when we set up these agendas, I mean, you can even see today, we just really made it through fall town meeting and petitions. It's really what we did today, and we're already at 10. The problem we have right now with this remote structure is things take so much longer. And so pulling these things and putting them into the agenda right now, well, we have town meeting coming in. And now we are gonna have, we're gonna have the, um, the Main Street and, um.
How, how, sorry, sorry.
The CBD and stuff, we just can't.
I'm gonna interrupt for just a second, how, how, I know that this is not a fun question, guys. Um, what if we even started at seven? What if, would you guys be up for starting 30 minutes earlier? And at any point in time for, because we're only meeting twice in September, it's honestly not good.
I'm, I'm up for that, but I had another suggestion, but.
I was just gonna challenge the, the idea that it has to go longer because it's remote, um.
But we just have more business, how about that?
Yeah, I mean, we would go long in person, too, this isn't like a new thing.
We always need more time, we, we always need more time, I, I don't.
Yeah, I, I don't feel like we should just blame it on that, because that's like saying we give up and. Whenever, you know, for eternity, when we're remote now, we have to go late, I, I don't, I don't want to buy into that.
No, but many times we've, we obviously have met at seven or 6:30 or whatever, if we know that's like, that we, once, you know. Probably three times a year, the agenda comes up where we have no control over that agenda, we just have to respond to certain things, and there's not enough time, so we add time.
Okay, I, okay, Lynn, I want to say, the presentations, whether it's for a special permit, or whether it's for the proposals for town meeting, um, they go too long. We've got to just tell them what their time is and cut them off, so I'm sorry, that's the reality, we.
I'm, I'm up for that, I'm up for that, but more importantly, are we, are people, our next meeting, where's my, my calendar, the calendar's up on the eighth. Can, for, for those two meetings, we also have to fit a hearing, our zoning hearing somewhere in there as well. So maybe that's the third meeting in September that we haven't planned yet, is that one, there's gotta be a zoning hearing somewhere in there. So, you know, let's plan on that, I guess, one of those other two weeks or some other time. But, um, the zoning hearings typically only take about 90 minutes. So that gives us an hour.
That's too much, an hour.
Okay, an hour, um, it does obviously depend if we, on a lot of things, but let's say we give it an hour. So if we make a third meeting in September, and we do an hour of, of a hearing, and then we put. And, you know, another 90 minutes of, of other work, we could do that rather than making these meetings longer. How does that feel? How do you feel about that?
I'm fine with that.
Alright, so we'll add a third meeting maybe, except I just hear from Dia, Heather, and everyone else, what do we? I think we're gonna have to add a third meeting, I don't even know, I'm asking you for this, we're gonna have to add a third meeting for a hearing at some point.
I just struggle, um, right now, I'm just struggling because. We used to, back when I started, it was like once, it was once a month, sometimes twice a month during town meeting. And, um, we are, we are taking on a lot more than, uh, we did four years ago. And so it's, it's just the amount, sheer amount of things that we are ambitious, board.
That's why you're paying, that's why you're paying me, right?
Not that we can't go and do it, it's just it's ambitious and it means more meetings, and it means, um, a lot more of our, um. A lot more, and so I don't know if that. If we want to continue to be as ambitious as we have been and continue meeting as often as we do with everything, um, going on.
Well, I'm, I'm happy with extending our time by half an hour, and I know that's not, that, that was, when I was chair, I, that happened for a while and people were unhappy. I would prefer that to having more meetings, unless we can keep those extra meetings short. Um, I'm with Maureen in that there is, I think we can manage our time better. And, uh, just be much more. Uh, assertive about shutting people down after a few minutes. I'm okay either way, I guess.
Yeah, I guess I would go towards fewer meetings and longer, if that's the option.
That, that, that sounds reasonable, once I calendar this hearing, the zoning hearing, I haven't done that yet. Um. Then we can figure out, figure out the rest, but it sounds like at least on the eighth, maybe we'll start at seven?
Okay.
I mean, we're not meeting for three weeks.
It's okay, um, I just, I want to go back, though, I know I'm, I hate repeating and when others do, but we really should be taking a different approach, getting more memos and, um. Getting some of this stuff, like Art's recommendation for the subdivision regs, that just shouldn't have been kicked, that can shouldn't have gone kicked down the road so much, um, too far. So we just should be looking at that list, Brian, I, you and I could work on just what type, what can be done quickly and effectively with impact for the board. We just, or you can do it yourself, I, I, just somehow we've gotta get this outside of our meetings and just move forward.
Yeah, I think you're expressing a lot of the problems that I, like I said, I was having at the, at the beginning of the meeting of that, those, those natural conversations. That used to happen between all, all of us, just they're just not happening.
There's just no, it's, it's just a ban, on my part, I'm working full-time, I got five kids at home, we got, right, and.
Well, the thing that we would, we would literally run into each other, the, the, and, and like, you know, oh, I was by town hall, like, and, you know, things happen.
Yeah.
That, those things aren't happening anymore, and that's why I think, I don't know, I'm having a problem with it. So I, I, I agree that something has to change, we can't just keep only. All five of, I obviously talk with Heather sometimes and other members sometimes, but I think that needs to be more regular. And not only have the times we interact with each others on these planning board meetings. Cause a six-minute conversation during the week might be the difference between six minutes that we have on the, at the, at the meeting. So.
Sounds good.
Okay, at 10:12, um, I'm out, I'm gonna go now.
I, 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 I move that we, um, what do we do now?
Adjourn.
Adjourn, thank you.
Second.
Albows in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, thank Heather, thank Brian.
Thank you very much, and everyone have a great night, thank you, Win Camp, and thank you, Nancy.
Thank you Winchester.